Tom's not here, so you've got to deal with me, I guess. Whatever that's worth. Agenda. Called order, already did that. Do we have? No. There's nothing on there for... Yeah, there's nothing on there for roll call.
No.
Okay.
Jamin's going to...
You're all here.
Jamin's keeping track of the beds and...
Point of order. We'd like credit for being here, since there are so many who are not.
All right. I'll write you a note.
There you go.
I just got a brief communication.
You weren't recognized.
Oh, sorry.
All right.
A brief communication, then we'll turn over the...
Yeah. Yeah, we don't have communications on here, but that's to say, is there any communications from anybody? Just throw it out there.
All right.
Hearing none. Okay, let's go right to it. 2020 executive budget summary. Jamin.
Yeah. Well, before we start, I just want to say a few words, and first of all, give a big thanks for Jamin and the staff for all the time and effort they put into the budget process so far. When I say so far, this thing is kind of fluid yet. We're still getting numbers trickling in from our insurance company, from the state of Wisconsin, so we're by no means calling this the final version of it. And that's why we have three meetings scheduled, and Jamin can go into the detail. So this is the beginning of the process. We still have, in the packet here, you have staffing requests. We're still looking at considerations to right-size and a combination of staffing requests, if the money were to be available. Right now, it's still too early to tell. This is the first meetings where the leadership team will be doing presentations. We'll also have some at the second meeting, and I think the third meeting is just going to be kind of a summary, and that's when we'll be bringing in some final recommendations for you guys to consider, and then pass on a recommendation from the committee of the whole to the council in November. So we certainly want to hear some feedback, so we can make sure we're all on the same page as we go through this. And Jamin's going to walk us through the process, and then we'll bring up the individual department heads that are here tonight.
Okay. Let me echo the mayor's sentiment, especially to the leadership groups in this budgeting process. I think this thing starts, actually, it starts in May with the CIP information requests.
In Seattle?
That's okay. So this process takes almost half a year just to get done, and it seems like by the time you get done with it, you're starting the next round. And they put a ton of work into it, so I really appreciate all the help that they give me to in this process. But with that, we'll kind of go through the slides here. Hopefully, the projector stays up for us, but if not, I gave everybody paper copies, too. As much as I hate paper, it's a little bit easier to follow for these types of presentations. So the presentation's scheduled tonight. You can see, I'll give a real quick kind of 2020 operating budget overview, just try to explain some of the technical pieces of the budget and where we stand from historical through the 2020 budget. We'll walk through the Opera House budget tonight, human resources and risk management, public works, IT and media services, library, the mayor's budget, and then finance, and then some of the other general departments that I'll go through as well as part of my presentation. The next meeting on October 16th, we'll go through the senior center, clerk, police, fire, EMS, recreation, planning, stormwater, and then the utilities. The utilities budget will be presented at their committee that Monday, I think the 14th, and then we'll bring it to the committee of the whole on the 16th. So at least the utilities committee will have a chance to make any edits to that. Not going to lie to you, the 16th is probably...
Can I just ask a quick? October 16th, what time? We said 6:00 o'clock start?
At 6:00 as well. That is a Wednesday, just so everybody knows, kind of fit in best with the schedule.
I'll tell you right now, I'll be late for that. I'm not going to be able to make it right out. I'll probably be about 6:30.
Okay, that's fine.
Hello. It's good to be here.
It's good to have you. You didn't miss much.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
We're still just starting to go through the process.
Okay. Back to the October 16th night. That's going to be a little bit longer night, some longer budgets there, but it kind of worked best. As we work through this and get closer to 16th, we'll see what I'm kind of feeling. We may move some things out to the 24th, if it makes sense, but we'd like to get through all the department budget presentations between tonight and the 16th, and then kind of leave October 24th to review any of the proposed changes, and then finalize the budget for the council meeting in November. So that's the schedule we have right now. All right. So here's some driving factors, and then some of the outstanding information we have yet. As of right now, we're proposing a 2% wage increase for non-union employees and a 3% wage increase for union employees. We did not see any increase in premium costs for health insurance. The net new construction this year, which is the amount that we actually had to raise our base levy by, was 1.48%, and that results in about $107,000 increase to the base tax levy. We'll touch on that in detail a little bit later in the presentation. Couple of the outstanding items, we are waiting on the state road allowance, street aid numbers. Act 243 residential dwelling levy increase, we actually did get that calculated yesterday, and we were hoping to be a little bit higher, but it's about $4,000. So not much, but every little bit helps at this point. So that is actually, the $4,000 is missing from the presentation information that you have right now. The EMS township contracts and rates, and then the billing amounts to the townships, they have been sent out to the townships in draft form. We're giving them some time to review them. The EMS contract and rates will be coming to, I think the rates will be coming to finance on Tuesday, and then on to council after that, and then the contracts we'll bring back to finance and council whenever we hear back from all of the townships at that point. But just to give you a heads up, EMS is planning to increase their rates for 2020, so we'll bring that over to finance and council in the next month or so.
Jamin, what's the 1% differential between the non-union and union employees? Just for, I mean, it's my first time through the process, so...
Well, the union contract is negotiated ahead of time.
Okay.
Was that for 19 and 20?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Two-year?
We actually got a three-year.
Three-year?
Is it three-year? 18, 19, 20? Oh, 19, 20, 21?
That's with the police officers.
Yeah.
Okay. So the 3% was negotiated there, and then the 2% comes from the best estimates that we have as we start working down this budget process, and in terms of where the bottom line is, so...
Okay. Thanks.
So at this point, this one's a little hard to see on the screen, but on your paper copies, you can see, it's just kind of a condensed income statement. Again, this just focuses mainly on the general fund operating budget at this point. You can see where the revenues and expenditures and the bottom line here. The first column of numbers there would be the 2020 department requested budget. You can see that would end up in a net loss of about $354,000. And again, keep in mind, there is some information we're still waiting on in terms of some revenues that could be trickling in at this point. But at this point, it's a negative $354,000, and that only includes the staffing requests at this point. There's no right sizing taken into consideration in that number at this point in time. So that would just be the existing staff requests for the general fund side of things. And then the right side is the 2020 mayor's proposed budget, which is what we're going through tonight at this point in time. So this is where the budget stands as of right now. Any questions on that? All right. So I never really know what people want to see or don't want to see, so I tried to summarize. I like graphs and pie charts and things like that. It kind of makes it easier for me to look at. So this just kind of breaks out, the top box breaks out where our revenues come from. And you can see 73% of it comes from taxes, and then the next big chunk is the intergovernmental revenues, which is the state shared revenue, the expenditure restraint revenue, and things like that. So you can see the bulk of our actual operating revenues on the general fund side comes from two different sources mainly. And then you can see the expenditures there. When we break this down, and this is the entire general fund budget, so it includes all the debt service and everything like that, so 49% of our budget relates to wages and benefits. 18% is what we'll call operation and maintenance, O and M. That's just kind of the direct charges that the departments incur from on a day-to-day basis, materials, fuel, things like that. And then you can see 24% of this, or I'm sorry, 49 relates to debt, 24% relates to wages, 18% relates to the O and M. So it's about three different buckets of costs that make up most of the operating piece. If you throw out the debt service, capital transfers, and the operating transfers, and just kind of look at it from an actual kind of operational cost type, day-to-day type costs that you would incur, that would just be the operation and maintenance and wages and benefits. That actually works out to about 70% of our budget relates to personnel costs, which would be wages, benefits, and health and dental. Does that make sense? I know we see a couple of different numbers. Everybody hears that 70%. So if you were wondering why that 49% potentially looks low compared to what you've been hearing in the past years, that's why. In all actuality, the operating expenditure is about 70% of that is made up through personnel costs. All right. So I think we've seen this a couple times at a couple different levels, but basically the bottom line here is what we're anticipating the impact to be overall at this point in time. Again, this is based on the equalized value, not the assessed value at this point, because we don't know that yet, and equalized value is kind of that set number that we know early on in the year. But as of right now, we're anticipating a total rate per $100,000 of equalized value to be about $797, and we're anticipating to see a decrease in the middle rate of right around 2% this year. Any questions on that? Again, that will change. It all depends on the assessment ratio and things like that, and how things flow through, but yes.
Mr. Riley? Thank you. Math for dummies. I'm not, actually not a dummy, but math-wise, yes. The $797.15, that means a $200,000 home in Stoughton would be paying two times that $797.15 in taxes, is that correct?
Right.
Yep. Thank you.
Again, the actual tax bill will be based on assessed value, not the equalized value, but we'll...
Yes.
We get that information pretty late in the game, so...
Good. Thank you.
All right. Expenditure restraint. This is kind of a challenging subject. People hear it, but sometimes don't truly understand it.
He's talking about me.
No. It's a struggle, and unless you're... It's on my mind all the time as we work through the budget process, because we generally know the revenues are going to get to where we need to be, or at least pretty close. We have a good idea of what they're going to be. The expenditure restraint is always kind of that wild card at this point in time. So basically, the state kind of limits you in two different ways. So they limit you in the net new construction in terms of what you can actually tax people, right? But then they also limit you in terms of how much you can raise your budget. So you're almost, you almost get punished for finding alternative sources of revenue, because even if you can find alternative sources of revenue through wheel tax, impact fees, whatever it is, doesn't mean you can actually spend it through the budgetary process, because they're saying, well, you can't spend it, because we'll take away the expenditure restraint money that we give you. In the case of 2020, that's about $238,000. So whenever we talk about kind of like right sizing and staff requests and things like that, and anything that would really bump the budget by a large amount, we always have to go back to this expenditure restraint and find out exactly what the total impact would be, because it's never just adding on to the right sizing or whatever it would be, because if we go over this expenditure restraint amount that's allowed, at the end of the day, we may have to find supplemental revenue to make up the $238,000 that we get from the state by meeting these expenditure restraint requirements. So I kind of want to just talk about this a little bit more, just so we understand. Do you guys have a separate handout in front of you? Kind of touch on it real quick and walk you through, and you can refer back to this later, too, in terms of how things work and everything, but I wanted to show you how the net new construction and expenditure restraint work in terms of how much revenue we get, but then also how much we can actually spend out of the general fund budget every single year. So on the left-hand side, it kind of shows what our 2019 net new construction is. You can see the first row of numbers there is the net new construction amount, and then they take what's actually physically removed. So net new construction isn't remodels, it's not improvements, it's not anything like that. It actually has to be a new building coming out of the ground, okay? And then the physically removed has to be obviously an existing building that's removed, and then you get your net new construction, which in this case was $17,223,000 for 2019. And then that looks at our 2018 equalized value, which I spelled incorrectly on the sheet, it's not on the screen, so nobody at home can see it, so that's good. About $1.2 billion-ish rounding up, so we end up with a net new construction increase of about 1.48%, okay? And when we apply that to our base tax levy from last year, that's where we get that about $107,000 increase, okay? Does that make sense, how we kind of increase the taxes every year through the net new construction model? And all of this information is provided from the Department of Revenue, so we get it, they calculate it for us, we double-check it, but yes, Sid.
So Greg?
Go ahead.
So if we found ways to save money on this budget that has been presented, is there any negative impact based on this whole situation where we're negatively impacted on revenue?
So the expenditure, well, the revenue side will be okay, because you're actually going to bump up to the expenditure restraint probably faster than you're going to bump up to the revenue issue, and that's on a year-to-year basis, so you never really know. So it's kind of a tricky little dance that we do every single year, trying to look forward. So if we look at my bottom note here on the net new construction, the first note is, this includes all growth within the city, including the TIF district. So if our TIF slows down, if there's not continued activity in TIF 7, TIF 5, TIF 8, that negatively impacts us. If there's not growth outside of the TIFs, that negatively impacts us. So if there's no growth within the city, including the TIF districts, our net new construction value drops, which means we don't have as much revenue to play with starting in 2021, because that would be the next year that we budget for. Just to put this in perspective, I think our building permits are about half of what they were last year at this point in time, and I have that table down here showing you kind of where we're at through August 31st at this point in time. You can see 17 and 18, we're $31 million and $36 million-ish, and that's for the entire year for 17 and 18. As of August 31st, we're at $15 million. It's unlikely to close that gap in the next four months, so looking forward to the 2021 budget year, we're pretty much anticipating a pretty small net new construction increase. Does that make sense, how we're going to get there?
It does, but my question is, if we would find ways to cut this budget in certain areas, are there any negative impacts for us to do that?
And that's when we'll jump over to the expenditure restraint, which is on the next side of the page here, and kind of shows how the net new construction factors in. So you're allowed to take 6% of your net new construction, or 60% of your net new construction. So you get to that 0.89%, and then we can add on the latest CPI, the Consumer Price Index, to that, which at this point in time, we're estimating to be about 1.85%. We won't have those numbers for another few days yet. So you can see, we're always kind of guessing up until the last minute with these budgets, but right now, we're anticipating an estimated allowed increase of about 2.7%. So if we work our way down, the estimated remaining amount that we could spend before we start bumping up to the expenditure restraint and lose that money is about $120,000 at this point, which sounds nice. As of right now, the revenue's not there. I anticipate it will be once we have some numbers trickle in. But when we work our way down here, there were numerous adjustments made in the 2020 budget, including creating a separate refuse fund. So if you look at kind of the tweaks we made to the budget, we created a refuse fund, which eliminated about $89,000 from our budgetary increase in 2020. We changed how we're administering the EMS admin funds, or admin fees that we charged them, which was $18,000. And then there was a Friends of the Stoughton Area Youth Center contribution, that was $21,000. That was almost a pass-through, and the accounting didn't make any sense to us, so we eliminated that. Not that the transactions won't take place, we just don't need to account for them the way we had in the past. So we were basically able to eliminate about $128,000 from the budgetary, from the 2020 budget. So if you take that $128,000 plus the actual increase to the budget of $158,000, we would have seen a $286,000 increase to our 2020 budget. We would have been over what's allowed with the expenditure restraint. Does that make sense?
Okay. If we saved $128,000 this year by cutting something, would we be negatively impacted?
Yep, in a second. So I'm just trying to paint the picture there, that these were one-time fixes, that these aren't going to exist next year. So we have to keep in mind, too, that even though we have some room to increase our budget at this point, we don't have these numbers to play with next year.
I'm talking about cutting...
If we cut the budget a little bit right now, and don't supplement it with some other costs, that impacts what we get to increase it by next year. So you want to keep your budget at a high enough level, because you have to apply the percentage every single year. If you cut it too much, that's less you get to increase it by by the next year.
Jim?
Thank you. Jim, the $223,000, is that what the state legislature in its infinite generosity sends back to the municipality if we do not overspend within their context?
Right.
Okay. Thanks.
Yeah. So to Sid's point, again, it's kind of a dance, that you want to stay as close to that expenditure restraint ceiling as you can, because that's all the more you can increase it by the next year. If we reduce it and don't find another way to spend that money, that's just less you get to apply against the increase next year.
That was what I was getting to, because we have to be careful about anything we do, because it affects us' anticipated expenditures.
Yeah. Budgeting is tricky, because every change you make, it impacts something else that the state says you can or can't do at this point. So we have to look at it from a perspective of going forward, to say, okay, yeah, it looks like we have a ton of room right now, but again, we made those one-time changes this year with the refuse fund and some of the accounting changes, that we end up with a bigger gap this year, but those changes aren't going to be available next year.
Thank you. Jamin, again, with the refuse fund, I know we discussed this, what did we do there? Did we change that to a fee-based, or did we just simply ship numbers somewhere to do that?
It's always been fee-based, but we were just accounting for it in the general fund. So you're looking at a 700-plus thousand-dollar budget that was fee-based. It wasn't, but with the increases we saw this year, it would have been a big hit to our expenditure restraint.
Yeah.
It has its own sole source of revenue through the fees, which means we can create a special revenue fund out of it, so we just created a brand-new revenue fund and said, you know, get off the general fund books.
Exactly. So it's still the fees are being paid, but it's just characterized in a different manner, not part of the budget. Thank you.
So again, this was just to kind of point out the tricky little dance between revenues, expenditure restraint, and all the little impacts that we have in terms of increasing, decreasing, and how that's all going to flow forward. So just something I want everybody to keep in mind as we kind of work through the staffing requests and right sizing and things like that.
Okay.
Well, thanks. I'll try not to ask too many, but here's another thought, and follow up with the council person's question of you with respect to cutting budget. If we were to take something out of an expenditure, not expend the monies on it, but instead shift that over to debt service, does that adversely impact us if we are applying more money to debt service? Is that going to impact what we can do with the budget the following year, or is, since it's expended?
It does, because even though you're reducing it and still spending it towards debt service, debt service actually gets pulled out of this calculation.
Okay.
So it's not part of the expenditure restraint formula. Again, it's hard to forecast how all these changes impact us, so it is a tricky little dance. I'm not saying, and I'm not painting the picture that we can't do anything with the money that's available here, I'm just saying there's potential impacts to the 2021 budgeting cycle in terms of if our net new construction goes down the way we think it's going to go down based on the building permits at this point in time, and how much the expenditure restraint allows us to spend. There's that dance of, while if we do go through maybe potentially some of the right sizing, or potentially some of the staffing requests, that has an impact on the 2021 budgeting cycle, because there may not be enough revenue there to sustain a 2% pay increase. We may have to knock it down to 1%. I'm not saying that's going to happen. We obviously don't know what's going to happen, but based on what we're seeing in terms of activity within the city this year, our net new construction is going to decrease significantly.
Any other questions? Okay, Tim.
Thank you.
You're at your limit, you know.
All right. Thank you. With respect, again, this is kind of a follow-up on Councilperson Boersma's inquiries. If we were to instead, then rather than the debt service question I'd asked you, if we were to take some of the capital improvement project monies and use it instead for personnel, use it instead to fund something for the people that work for us in the city, give them more money, would that then not have an adverse effect, because we're merely, we're still budgeting, we're paying for something else?
You have that option. There's $200,000 right now that goes from the general fund to the capital outlay fund that's part of that process. If you were to say, you know what, we don't want to do that anymore, we want to free that money up to fund positions, or right sizing, or whatever it is, you could certainly do that. Again, the adverse impact of that is either reducing the CIP and eliminating some projects, or borrowing more money.
Thank you.
So the dance is pretty delicate, so I'll give you an example. In Verona, they've had a tremendous amount of growth the last several years, so they've added positions. While this year, they don't have any growth, their growth is less than ours, so now they're thinking they may have to eliminate some of the positions that they created in the last couple of years. So you have to be fairly conservative when you're looking at this stuff, especially if you're adding positions, because we want those positions to be funded and have a sustainable plan. So that's kind of the art of this, and I think, at least myself, and I think Jamin as well, we're a lot more educated about how this works than we were last year at this time. We're both still fairly new, and we're still learning this kind of stuff, but you can already see some of the good work that's already been done to put us in a better situation going forward, so...
I would agree with that, because, actually, this right here, this anticipated expenditure, that's the first time I've ever heard it, and I've been here for 12 years. So, yeah, we're getting educated. Any other questions on this rather difficult...
I'll ask another one, even though I'm at my limit, if I may.
Yeah, Tim, you...
Go ahead. Thank you. I understand the mayor's esteem, I understand his concern there, but one could still fund something with respect to the existing positions, and not have to be concerned about eliminating other positions for the future, right? Merely better supporting those employees we have now, you know, giving to them a better, you know, more of an income, maybe a 2.5% increase, 3.5% increase, whatever the case may be, but that would, there's less, I would think, of a concern there than there would be as to creating an entire new position, even though we need them, like in Parks and Rec, he desperately needs help. But would it be less of a risk to not fund a new position, but rather supplement what we are paying the people who are working for us now?
I don't think so, because if you're talking about increasing a pay increase to everybody, that increases everybody's base pay, and that you have to do pay raises on top of that as the years go on, if you add positions. And again, it's, and that's more of a conversation that we need to have with the department heads as we work through this, in terms of what's more important at this point in time, staffing, right sizing, pay increases, things like that. We already know, going into next year, we're more than likely going to see an increase in the health insurance costs. We got lucky this year with no premium cost increase, but if we are looking at 5% to 6%, the expenditure restraint gets eaten up pretty quick. It's hard for me to say what the best answer is in terms of adding staff, or heading towards the right sizing, or giving everybody a little bit of bump over the 2%. My opinion would be not to increase the overall pay for everybody, and look closer at the staffing requests and the right sizing before we look at just an overall bump in pay for everybody at this point.
Does the city have latitude, Jamin, to give some type of bonus-type situation, even if we were to just say, hey, you know, we don't have, well, we're concerned about what the future holds for us, but rather than build this, build that, build that, pair that, whatever we're talking about, we'd like to dedicate those funds to reward our employees. Maybe it's just a bonus or something like that, where we don't make a commitment for years and years and years, but we are still recognizing the value of the work of those who work for the city.
I imagine we have that option. I don't know if we've explored it. We do have the longevity bonus that everybody gets in terms of years of service. Other than that, that's the only one I'm aware of.
Thank you. I'm done for now. Thank you.
I think I get what you're going after there, Tim.
Thank you.
I think it goes back to what the mayor was saying before, that you had that delicate dance.
Yep. I'm a very good dancer.
Yeah, okay. All right, so let's move on.
Thanks.
Okay, so this one's a little challenging to see on the screen, but I'll just walk you through what this is. So, this is the buckets of revenue that the expenditure restraint actually makes us report on. You work your way across. You can see we have 17 actuals, 18 actuals, and then the 2019 budget is the middle column. And then we have the 2020 mayor's proposed budget and then some change information there in terms of dollars and percent. You can see not a lot of huge significant swings, at least as we work our way down. You can see intergovernmental revenues went up by about $202,000 at this point in time. Really, there's so much that makes that up. I think the overall average change was about $6,800 per revenue source, so it's pretty minimal and kind of tough to pick out exactly what changed. For the most part, those numbers aren't guessed at. Those are provided by the state or DOT or parties like that. So, we know with pretty good amount of certainty what those are going to be. So, I didn't spend a lot of time analytically in terms of why that number changed so much, but I think we've tended to see that number increase over the years. Licenses and permits, you can see we're down $22,000 compared to the 19 budget. And again, we're anticipating that building is going to continue to slow and most of that decrease relates to the building permit revenue. Miscellaneous revenue, you can see we're anticipating a jump of about $79,000. Again, there's so many accounts that make up that number. On average, it's about $4,000 per revenue source. The other financing source, you can see one change we made here. In the past, we had budgeted the contingency for $80,000. This doesn't make a lot of sense to me to budget it this way. We would budget an $80,000 revenue source that never actually existed and never would exist, and then we budgeted $80,000 on the expenditure side. We're kind of proposing, why don't we just track the contingency amounts throughout the year? I -- we present them every two -- twice a month at finance committee. They see them. We can easily set a ceiling of $80,000, but there's no real point in terms of budgeting it at this point in time, so we didn't want to put it in there. We can certainly add it back in. It just didn't make a lot of sense to me.
Jamin, I've always viewed that as we have $80,000 kind of put aside in a special savings account to cover that. So, how would you then balance that? I mean, where's that money going to be coming from then if we don't have it set aside?
Well, it'd be coming from the fund balance, the same as it always has in the past. Basically, what they did to balance the budget was they would put an $80,000 revenue amount in that if you go back and look at activity in the contingency revenue line, it's zero forever because there's no actual revenue. It's just fund balance or the savings account, like you said, and then we have the $80,000 contingency budget. We already track it anyway, so why budget it at this point? Why run the risk of it popping out in the expenditure restraint? Throughout the years, we've eliminated it, but they could always raise the question, well, why isn't this included in your expenditure restraint calculation? It just didn't make sense to budget it because we're pulling it out of fund balance anyway.
I've got to try and wrap my head around that one.
Yeah, it's really kind of goofy. At the end of the day, if you were to budget it appropriately by budgeting an $80,000 revenue line that doesn't exist, there's no revenue source. It's fund balance.
So, basically, it's the same thing as what we were doing before, but you're just not going to?
We're just not budgeting it. Right. We're not putting it in the budget because you end up in the same place.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, to not lose track of this, then can we establish the ceiling of the contingency fund at some point in committee?
Yeah, and we can make a recommendation right now. I think the $80,000 has been working well, and that's fine with me. We can -- I can certainly build that into the council meeting for November, too, just to formalize it at 80 grand.
Okay. That way, we just don't lose track of it.
It just kind of closes the door on another question that the state could potentially come back and look at us in expenditure restraint purposes and say, well, you're backing this out of your expenditure restraint calculation, but it's budgeted, you know, so, you know, why even put it in there?
Any questions? Hold on.
All right. So, the next page, just a real quick breakdown of the sources of revenue. You can see it's pretty clear. It's taxes. That makes up the bulk of it. You can see kind of the trend line from 17 actual, 18 actual, 19 budget, and then the 20 budget. So, pretty steady trend in terms of where our revenues are growing. This graph here, you can see this is -- this would be general fund operating expenses, which would be the operation and maintenance or the O&M that we spoke about, wages, benefits, and then health and dental. So, this shows 16 actual, 17 actual, 18 actual, the 19 budget, and then the 2020 mayor's proposed budget, which we're talking about tonight, and then the 2020 requested includes all of the staffing requests at this point in time. This was kind of interesting. I didn't really know what it would look like until I actually graphed it out, but if you look at where we're at in terms of where we're proposed and where the 2020 requested is with the staffing request, it's almost like we're a year behind. If you look at the kind of the trend and the way it's going, we're almost exactly a year behind in terms of where we're at from a revenue and expenditure restraint standpoint compared to where we think we should be in terms of staffing. Does that make sense? This one, we're not going to spend a lot of time on. This just breaks down the general fund operating budget by departments. We're going to go through those one by one. If you want to read it at home, you're certainly welcome to. The graph is the same one we just talked about. So, the 2020 general fund operation and maintenance expense summary, again, these are just kind of the direct day-to-day charges. This doesn't include any wages, benefits, anything like that. But you can see working your way across in this, you can see the 2016 increase. We saw about an 8.8% increase. 2017 was 7. 18 was almost 3%. 19 budget increase was 5. And then this year, with the shifts that we made in terms of moving the refuse fund out and moving some other costs out for expenditure restraint purposes, you can see we ended up with about a 2% increase. I wouldn't anticipate that every single year going forward. That number will jump again next year, but with the changes we made and were able to pull out of the budget, it's pretty low this year. And then the bottom graph just kind of gives you an idea of where we've been budget to actual over the past few years in terms of the operation and maintenance costs. So, you can see 15 and 16 look like we were overbudgeted. 17 and 18 actually worked out pretty well. This one, again, we're not going to spend a lot of time on it. This is just the overall O&M summary for the entire general fund. So, here's the 2020 general fund wage summary. You can see the -- excuse me. The 2020 department requested, which is the second column from the right, that does not include any of the staffing requests at this point in time. That's kind of isolated separately in the presentation. And right now, the 2020 mayor proposed in terms of wages, just for the general fund at this point in time, is just over $5 million. The bottom line there is just the non-overtime wages. That's closer to $4,854,000. When I do my analysis in some of the graphs as we look at on the later pages, it makes more sense to pull out overtime because that's kind of one of those one-offs that fluctuates from year to year. I'd much rather just look at the straight hourly wage data that we have. So, this page here, we don't need to spend a lot of time on it, but this is just kind of your go-back-to summary form of the staffing requests that are out there right now. We'll cover these in detail as we go through the department budgets, but you can see where the general fund increase, if we were able to meet all of these, would be about $362,000. And then the library is sitting out there on an island at about $21,000. And again, I separate those just because they're kind of two separate funding sources, two separate funds within the budget. So, this graph here is pretty similar to the O&M piece, and it shows what the increase has been historically for 16, 17, and 18. And then we had the 19 budget increase, and this is just wages of about 4.3%. The 2020 budget increase, as the mayor's proposing, is at about 3.28%. If we were able to accommodate all of the staffing requests at this point in time, it'd be an additional 11% on top of that. Okay? Then again, the bottom graph...
On top of the 3%?
3%?
Yeah.
Okay.
And this is what's called a waterfall chart. So, on the right-hand side, you can see it shows the percentage that we've grown in total over the years in terms of wages. So, as we work our way up from 16 through the 2020 mayor's proposed budget, we've seen about a 20% increase in wages since 2015 -- or 2016, sorry. Bottom schedule is just budget to actual. You can see we've actually been running higher than budgets the last few years. Here's the employee benefit summary, which would be FICA, WRS, life insurance, things like that. You can see, again, mayor's proposed budget is $776,000 at this point in time. We saw a big jump in the 2020 budget of almost 9% compared to the 19 budget. Most of that has to do with it's a little bit lower number in the scheme of things, so the dollar change isn't that much in the scheme of the entire budget. But when you see jumps in the WRS, this tends to happen because it's basically a smaller denominator that you're working with. So, it's a larger increase. You can't just anticipate, well, we're raising wages by 3%. Benefits should only go up by 3%, too. That's not quite how it works. It's always a little bit higher. But you can see in the past, too, how this has fluctuated. The 16, 17, 18, you can see it had a really low increase, and then in 17, it was 8%. 18 was 3%. 19 budget was 1%. Now, we're back up to the 9%. So, we've seen a lot of fluctuations in this, just even through the historical activity. And this kind of paints a picture in terms of how hard it is sometimes to budget employee benefits. You can see where we've been budget to actual over the years, and, you know, some years we're over, some years we're under, by pretty significant amounts, actually. So, health and dental, same setup. We're anticipating about $1,015,000. That's about a $30,000 increase over the 2019 budget. You may be asking, how does that happen if we saw no premium increases? But with the tier structure that we have with single, employee plus spouse, employee plus children, and family, when there's changes in elections, our costs go up, and that's kind of what happened this year. We saw a lot more on the family side of the plans at this point. So... But you can see historically, this has been all over the board, too. 2016, we had a big decrease. 2017 was an increase. 18 was a decrease, and then 19 and 20, we're seeing increases again. So... Here's the budget to actuals. This one's actually apparently harder to budget than anything, so you can see where we've been budget to actual in terms of what happens with these. It's -- this is a tough dance in the budgeting process. We budget as-is, where people stand. We try to incorporate things that we know of. If somebody's going to get married, or we know somebody's going to have a child, we try to incorporate that. But if somebody were to go from not being on a city plan to all of a sudden going to a city plan and they have a family, that's a $21,000 swing. So, you can see how quickly this number can fluctuate. That's just one employee. So, when there's changes throughout the years, this budget kind of gets thrown out of whack. All right, so now we will start talking about the 2020 fund and departmental operating budgets that are scheduled for tonight. Again, we'll go through the Opera House, HR, Public Works, IT, library, mayor, and then finance in general.
Yes, Sid.
I have a request that we go for Public Works first.
Why would that be?
I have some commitment tonight, and I would like to get started on Public Works. I think it's a relevant issue that both Riley and I have to talk about.
Is it CIP, though?
I have a show that's starting at half an hour.
We'll go with the schedule.
Hey, those chairs over there are almost as uncomfortable as the ones at the Opera House. My God. Nobody provides cushions at the council meetings.
They're less entertaining, too.
I'd like to budget.
I'd like to buy you all new chairs, but...
Yeah, yeah. I would like you to do that as well. Do... So, what you've got in front of you is a budget to continue operations at the Opera House in the calendar year of 2020, with the exception of some increases in the health insurance, which Jamin just spoke to, having to do with an employee coming on to the city insurance, and another one coming in who had family, while the previous one had single, and the one who didn't have health insurance came on with family. We've seen some increases there in our costs, but other than that, any fluctuations in the expenditures are offset by additional money coming in through revenues. So, it's pretty straightforward. I think probably the most productive way of you guys getting the information you need is just to open it up to questions.
So, I have a question. We -- I had been on the Opera House board a number of years ago, and this is a long time ago, but it was some intent, I think, from the Opera House board at that point that I understood that we were going to try to make the Opera House self-sufficient in a number of years, and whether or not you're moving toward that potential in the future?
You know, the scale of the thing has just changed so much over the course of the last 12 years or so, and that's been seen in the positive impacts to the community. But the numbers have gotten bigger. I think in the old days, we would do 10 or 12 shows a season, and so the expectation that, you know, if we could only make an extra $20,000 or $30,000 a year, that we'd be able to be completely independent, I think, was really realistic. These days, the numbers are bigger, and we also have been more ambitious, having seen the potential with what we have been doing at the Opera House. I think it's very forward-thinking to have moved the city admin offices out of the first floor of the building. There's a lot of potential there for opening up new revenue streams and other services, and I think potentially seeing that become an independent fund. I, you know, it's one of those things that it's -- it would be okay to stop and say, yes, this is enough. We don't really want it to do anymore, but that would be something that you guys could decide on. Say, we've gone far enough with the Opera House, and there's nothing left for the Opera House to give to the community. But I think we've only begun to see the untapped potential.
But do you have a business plan that sort of makes it -- do you have a goal for that?
It's tricky to...
Is that a possibility?
Well, it's tricky to get the cart ahead of the horse on this one, or vice versa. We have a strategic plan that we're working on with the Stoughton Opera House Friends Association Board, as well as the Opera House Board, to identify precisely what that plan is and what the associated costs are. But the problem is, is that, for instance, with the expansion of concessions on the first floor, the initial costs involved with offering concessions aren't right away going to be offset by the revenues. I would hope that that would be the case going down the road, but every year, we see an increase in costs largely associated with staffing costs because you're always going to see that little uptick in insurance and, you know, the 2% and all that. So, and we keep wanting to do more, but it's very hard to keep up with that, the inflation of the costs. So, you know, I would like to see the continual investment in the Opera House from the city. I think that right now, the level in this budget is set at the, what has been more or less a traditional level, which is the cost of two full-time positions. And then the Opera House is covering all of our seasonal temporary contracted labor and one full-time position. That's what the level of funding is for this budget this year. So, that number would continue to go up with the cost of funding those positions. I'd like to see that level of funding maintained. I'm not sure that I see much of an argument for, other than we're broke, I don't know much of an argument for not funding the Opera House. I just see so much of a return coming back into the community that could be -- you know, I think all of us have been involved with studies and efforts to increase economic impact in the community of the resources that we're putting out there. And, you know, last year was around $165,000, I think, is what the number was. In this budget, it's $182,000. But for that amount of money, I think we all know that if we go out to one of these consulting firms and are looking to get an actual economic impact in the community for that money, you're not going to see anything like you're seeing from the Opera House. I think we've seen a huge amount of success over the last decade. I think it's done wonders for the increase of awareness for Stoughton as it is, but also to the branding of Stoughton as a destination for people to come and visit, for people to come and live in, and those are all the kinds of things that I think are essential for the development of Stoughton. So...
Mayor?
Yeah, and I was just going to mention that in the budget here, we do commit to the two positions, and we've traditionally done that for at least as long as I've been counsel. I don't know about you, Greg. You've been on here longer. So, we're just continuing that commitment. We're looking forward to the strategic plan to be completed to see what the future of the Opera House looks like, and we're excited for that future. Other than that, there's really, you know, I don't know if there's any other thing that sticks out on this budget. I mean, the biggest impact was because we had turnover at the Opera House and the new person that started is on the health insurance, so that's why that amount increased.
Just a second. I've got something to say, and then I'll let you have it. The way I look at it is that we have entities within the community that are there for the benefit of the community, and I consider the Opera House as that, as one of those. You look at the senior center, you look at the youth center, you look at the Opera House. Two of those don't have any kind of revenue at all. The Opera House is something that is... The Opera House is, is something that, that is, is unique to this community. And I am, I'm, me personally, I'm, I'm happy to continue to fund them until they can prove that they consistently pay for themselves. But I have no problem with, with continuing that at all. Tim?
Thank you. I just had a couple of definitions, I guess, questions. With respect to outside services contracts, I'm just curious what, what that generally entails. Can you see where I'm...
Uh, yeah.
It's two, it's like 47.712 for this year.
Yeah, that one is actually bank fees and also ticketing fees. Those are the costs that are associated to the Opera House with selling the tickets themselves.
And Bill did something new this year, and you might want to mention that.
Thank you for the gentle nudge. Yeah, it is, it is true that, you know, there's an enormous amount of pressure to tap into the very obvious source of revenue, which is fees. I think anybody who's bought a ticket in recent years, and maybe bought a ticket a long time ago, has also, has noticed that it's pretty ridiculous. There's this thing that has, people are trying to push on me called dynamic pricing, which means that, you know, the better the show, and the more people are looking to get tickets, all of a sudden, tickets will shoot up to whatever people will buy for. It's, I think that's crazy. I think it's fraud. And, but at the same time, we weren't making back all of our, all the money that we were spending on fees. So we were, we were just breaking even or losing a little bit of money on that. So we introduced a fee to cover more of the processing costs of our credit cards, and that has actually, because we're selling so many tickets, it's generated another $30,000 for the 2020 budget that's coming in, in the, as, as fees. That's money that wasn't there before. It is covering something we were paying for, so.
Great. Just the other thing I was just looking for, some more information, is the operating expenses guarantees, is that what you're paying artists, I'm assuming, or?
Yeah, that's the...
Artist fees, et cetera?
Yeah, that's the fees.
Okay, cool. And do you have any, I know that there, there are thoughts with respect to increasing revenue from the standpoint of the hospital. You discussed that a little bit, because your initial cost is obviously going to upstir. But do you have some optimism with respect to, to that? Are there, are there going to be things such as Opera House merchandise with the groovy tower logo and that? Whatever. I'm not suggesting I'm designing it.
Yeah. There are, there are lots and lots of interesting ideas for having products to sell, but there's also been a lot of experience with how you cannot make money trying to sell stuff. So we're trying to be a little cautious about that. There is the obvious, the elephant in the room is beer or wine. And we are looking at that. We'd like to be able to, we'd like to be able to sell beer and wine, or look into having a third party do that. It's a little bit tricky, you know? Everyone has concerns about, I think, any time that you're introducing alcohol into a situation that was up to that point relatively stable, you have to be paying attention to what are you doing. So I, I think that we want to tread lightly walking into that, but that's, in its obvious source of revenue, it's the primary source of revenue for most of the venues that are booking shows similar to ours, is that they're just barely covering the cost of paying the person and, or paying the people, and paying the security, and all the other costs that are associated with it. But then they're making a ton of money on beer, which is why somebody like Live Nation, they want to own the venue, because, because then they get to keep the beer money. So, but there's that. And then also, I think that one of the exciting things on the first floor is, is that as we see the development of the space on the east side of the building, on the first floor, I think we're going to see opportunities for revenue sources that will be completely untapped up to this point, that'll involve events that are taking place outside of the normal Opera House events, that I think will be largely focused on smaller organizations, both regionally, but mostly within the community. So there's, there's a lot of excitement, a lot of ideas. I'd encourage any of you who are interested to come and talk to me, or I can introduce you to the members of the board about some of the ideas that are floating around, so.
Thank you.
I have, John, Tim?
I'm, thank you.
I have a quick question for you, and then Sid and Lisa, I think you had one too?
Yeah.
Okay. Quick question is, when you, when you book an act, do you, okay, you actually, you know, they're going to say it's going to cost you so much for the, for the evening, right? Do you have a margin that you want to make over and about that? You don't have to tell me what it is, I just want to know, do you have a certain margin that you're trying to meet from each act? Is it the same margin?
No, it isn't the same margin for each act. It, it varies. The, the, the more prominence that an act is bringing to the venue, and particularly, we're stuck in between a performing arts center and a club, where neither one of those things, which is good sometimes, because we're going back and forth between agents who are typically responsible for PACs and agents who are typically responsible for clubs. And so they don't really know who to give us to, so that gives me a little bit of latitude to play around with them a little bit, in, in terms of passing myself back and forth between different people without them really understanding who they're talking to. But, so for smaller groups, you're going to see a much, you're going to, you're going to see a greater opportunity for a large margin. And for bigger groups, it's more of a, it elevates the Opera House to have people like that, like Lyle Lovett or Juan O'Najud, those kind of people come into the room. But the risk is greater, and the potential result is just for a razor-thin margin to pay your bills. Some of the smaller groups, you know, the Acro Cats, they had one of the best profit margins of any group we've ever had come through, you know, performing house cats. What do you, you know, what are you going to do? But we...
You don't have to pay the cats?
Well, and they paid them in tuna fish, I swear to God. They cooked up the tuna steaks in the morning before the show, so the whole place smelled like tuna. And then when the city staff would come in on Monday, they would be like, what's that smell? And that's completely serious. And the yodeling has got to stop, at least the aide used to say. But no more, so we're excited. Sid?
So do you, as part of your strategic plan to do some grant writing, because I know that there are grants for venues like our Opera House?
Yeah. I'm really excited because we have a new person who, I, I feel like we've been really lucky with the way that the staff transitions have happened. We would, we should be so thankful that, for those of you who knew Christina Dahlhausen, or you know Christina, to have gone from Christina to somebody as capable as Nikki had, was for three-plus years, and then to be going from Nikki to now Brandy Brandis is the new house manager at the Opera House. She's an incredibly capable person with a breadth of experience that is so far beyond what my, my best hope would have been. And she has had huge success in the Bay Area and San Francisco, very competitive environment with, with grant writing, and I think that that will benefit everybody. I think notably, I would be, I would be, I would be, I would be in trouble if I didn't mention the fundraising efforts through grant writing that have been accomplished over the last few years by the Stoughton Opera House Friends Association, which spells out SOFA, or SOFA if you, if you pronounce the H. But SOFA wasn't around until 2013, and that was primarily because we needed to have a friends association established again for us to get the Capes River Music Festival back up and running. But over the years since then, since it came around, and that's kind of a backwards development plan, because most people would go out of a restoration into, they would have a well-established endowment, and they would, they would deal with that for a number of years, and then they would start to see that there was going to be a problem as the endowment was shrinking. We kind of did the opposite, in that we pushed volume really heavily out of the restoration without having a foundation in place. And only when we got around to about 10 years or eight years after, things got kind of, kind of crazy at the Opera House, did we realize we're going to need a, we're going to need to have an endowment in place. And so SOFA's been working on that. You may be noticed at the Capitol Improvements meetings that you guys have had, I, that I was not present, and that's because we don't have any items in the CIP for the city. You know, I, there's the building. I think that's, that's notable, and everybody is aware of that. But in 2013, SOFA got grants for $24,000 for new sound equipment. We got the advertising digital kiosk in front of the building. We spent $25,000 on that in 2014. $27,000 in 2015 on seat repairs, believe it or not. A hearing aid loop that generates an RF signal in the room for people who have hearing aids, that they're able to tune into the board feed in their ear. We repaired leaking windows, and redid painting and redid plaster. That was $27,000 in 2015. $28,000 in 2016 came in from grants through SOFA for electrical improvements on the stage to accommodate some of these touring acts for balcony handrails that are upstairs now, so that the ushers and the patrons won't be falling down. And a remodel of the dressing rooms, which if you had seen, if you could see them before and after, it's quite impressive. Then in 2017, we also got grant dollars through SOFA, $32,000 for the construction of ramps for loading equipment to the stage, which is really great, because, you know, I'm not getting any younger, and neither is my back, and I'm always participating in all the load-ins. And if they have wheels, it was terrible to have to lift everything onto the stage. But, so we've got these great ramps. And then we also replaced a bunch of lighting fixtures with LED lighting fixtures, which I think is saving everybody a little bit of money on the electrical bill, but also has some huge hidden costs associated with staff time. LED lights just in the stage world make it a lot easier. And so that's $32,000 in 2017. In 2018, it was another $31,000 for replacing our speakers. It costs about $31,000 for the new speakers we have in there. Again, it's a world-class system that was replacing a system from the late 90s, very, very out of date. And this year, notably about a month ago, a little less, we got a $48,000 grant through SOFA, acquisition of the grant through SOFA to replace the piano in the Opera House. The grand piano in the Opera House had seen better days, and the tuner had been mourning me for about five years. And so we've been working on getting, how, what we were going to do is try not to panic for the last five years about the piano. But, so we, we now have a brand-new piano, $48,000, that did not get asked for. So that's, that's about $215,000 in the last five, six years, that if you look at it the right way, you could say has money, money saved. Many of those things were things that needed to happen in order for us to continue to earn the revenues that we're earning, but we didn't have to ask you to spend those, those dollars. We just went out and did it, and I think that we can raise more money. I think that Brandy's going to be a huge help in that, because we only have limited staff time. Right now, Brandy is, is running the light board over at the Opera House, which she shouldn't be doing, because she's never done that before. But she, she ran the one in San Francisco, so it's, how different could it be? But, yeah, it's tricky, because when we have our entire staff multitasking on all these different production tasks, and then we want to be able to do grant writing, which can be a full-time job at many venues, fund development, the development director, you know, these are all things that are kind of gimmies at a venue. We're making all this happen with three people, and it's incredibly challenging. But I think, I mean, we're looking at grant money all the time.
Lisa?
I was just going to ask Bill to mention the grants, but you did, so.
Okay, we're good.
Well, I'm good.
Anybody else? Okay. Thanks, Bill.
Oh, wait, it's still not started yet. I can still say.
AJ, would you mind if we accommodated?
Okay.
We're going to skip then ahead to Public Works.
All right. Let me just breeze through real quick, and you can touch on...
Either or. I mean, I have a few highlighted items, but if you want to just...
Yeah, I'll just kind of walk you through Brett's documents real quick, and then open it up for questions, and some highlights from Brett as well. So Brett's budget starts here with this Public Works slash Parks. This is basically a roll-up of all of his departments. We'll go through each department individually, but this shows the entire roll-up for all the departments that he manages. So the first one being the highway, street, and maintenance. So if you look at this one, now, I just kind of highlighted a couple of the more significant shifts and ones that might raise some eyebrows. The weird one here is salaries. Obviously, we're seeing it go down by 1%, which seems kind of funny, considering we're still giving Brett a pay increase. But we are shifting some of the, the wages to the actual refuse fund, which, which weren't tracked that way when it was back in the, the general fund. So that's why it's showing a decrease here, but Brett's still getting more money than he, he is this year. The next line here is the health insurance, the 19% change over 19. Again, that's just due to some shifts in the employee elections, nothing you can do about that. People have kids, people get married. The utilities, the 33% shift, again, that's due to the utilities at the new building.
And I'll just jump in with that one. So yes, we do have a, a new building. It's an incredibly efficient building. It's obviously a bigger building. There's also more code that we had to meet with the new building as far as systems go that were not in place at the old building. So there is some bigger systems that do run more that didn't run the old place. But we are working with WPPI and Stone Utilities to look at our energy use, to try to bring that down, looking at different types of commissioning with different types of systems. So we are looking at reducing the amount of energy that we use at that, at that building.
And I would just mention, you're going to see a common thing on the phones, the landlines are all being transferred to IT. You know, I don't know if you want to add anything to that, Jamin, but...
Yeah, we'll touch on that on each individual one. Some departments were impacted more than others, but we looked at like landline and charter costs, and, and you'll see it in John's budget when we walk through that too, that he's going to see a big jump in his budget. But when it came to landlines and charter and some other things like that, he was spending a, just an insane amount of time trying to code them back to the individual departments, and it just didn't make sense, because there wasn't a ton of fluctuation in those costs anyway. So we decided, and it's a good idea by John, to just move it into the IT department and pull it out of the individual fund depart, individual departments. So overall, the cost doesn't change, but I think the amount of administrative time that John's going to spend coding these changes significantly. So we're, we'll see some shifts in the department budgets from that. We did leave like data, cell phones, things like that in the individual departments, because those fluctuate from, from month to month, and it was a better way to track it and kind of hold department heads accountable for their use. So turn on your Wi-Fi, guys. Moving, moving on, so the, the next big change here, you can see a negative 12% in the operating expenses. Again, this was kind of some more accounting semantics than anything. Historically, Brett's, Brett's group does work for EMS and utilities, and we would show expenses and revenues. So we show a revenue line and expense line. We just decided, you know what, we're just going to net that revenue with this expenditure. And, and this is another one of those examples of kind of helping out the expenditure restraint to, to show that these costs are truly not general fund costs, they're EMS and utilities costs. So the expense line was ultimately kind of showing twice within the city. It was showing on the EMS side, but also showing in the highway and street maintenance department. So we just said, you know what, we're just going to net the revenue and expenditure from that work and code it this way. So that's why we see the decrease here.
The, the note here about anticipating reduction in street lighting costs, is that through efficiency or by removing lights?
That's a project for next year downtown, LED lighting, you know, the streetlights downtown. Going back to what Jamin was just talking about with the EMS and Stone Utilities, is that's referring to the fleet maintenance expenditures or revenues that we actually bring in from them to maintain their vehicles. I think they would attest that it's, it's far cheaper to go through our facility than it would be to take it out to an outside vendor. So it's really a good thing for the entire city to utilize our, our shop.
Yeah. And we, we looked for these opportunities while budgeting this year. From an accounting standpoint, and, you know, from an audit standpoint, we generally want to see revenues in a gross amount and expenditures in a gross amount, and not continue to net things. But this is one instance that made sense, because again, we were almost showing the expenditure twice within the city financials, one on the EMS side and one on, on the highway and street maintenance costs. So that's why we decided to show a net here. It's kind of a little dance that you do with it, but in this case, it made sense to do it that way. overall, the budget shifted 3% over the 19 budget, so not a significant amount. Any questions on that department?
I noticed uniform allowance has gone down 16%. They're still wearing clothes.
They still have clothes, but we look at all of our vendors and try to cut costs, even with uniforms, and then try to reduce our.
They're going in their shorts instead of pants.
Shorts. So we do have different vendors that we use that we try to get price breaks from and look at our expenditures at.
Good going.
I'm afraid I'm going to call on Jim. Did you see you reluctantly calling on him?
I was afraid. It was fear.
I'm just curious, the outside services contracts, $56,000 down to $55,000. Could you just tell me what that's comprised of?
So if that's the one, which there's a couple of different line items for.
Yeah, well, there's one that has nothing, I think, and the other's $56,000.
The one that says.
Yeah, it's.
That's one I was just carried in there from other projects that happened probably in the past that no longer were funded anymore.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, but I'm asking about the one that's the amended budget, $56,000, 2020 costs $55,000. I'm just curious what that's comprised of.
That's to do with our forestry, so contract services for all our tree trimming.
Et cetera.
Yep, tree removals, things like that.
Yeah, I just wanted to really give Brett and his department a lot of kudos for the work they've been doing the last year. They have a fairly limited amount of crew members, and the response we get when somebody calls in, whether it's snow removal or cleaning leaves out of a sewer, you know, just anything, these guys are there like that. And I get a lot of good feedback from the community about the work that's going on in his department.
I can verify that. I asked them to take down a dead tree that I noticed on my walk, and it was gone next week.
Here to serve.
Go ahead, Phil.
I just have a question about the contracted services grinding.
Yes. So that has to do with our compost facility. So every time people bring brush to the compost site, we have to grind that brush twice a year. We, our contracts for that have gone up over the past couple of years. It's nice just to accommodate for that. But I also mentioned that that's offset by a revenue fund. So that's really, it's covered through a revenue stream, but this is just shown in the expenditures.
Brett, to that, have you, have we done a comparison, what it would cost to have the equipment ourselves versus?
Sort of to purchase like a tub grinder that we bring in, it's about a quarter million dollars.
Okay.
So we're doing good, just contracting it out.
One of the things I just wanted, and the reason why I wanted to have this covered
before I have to leave tonight, is I've had concerns about the new building and I've seen it, it's a beautiful building, but wondered what the impact of that was on your budget because I know that the expenses for that large structure, which you covered a lot of that just now, that you've seen some increase expenditures on utility costs and all that because it's a bigger building, but generally, are you happy with the building and happy with the, you know, the fact that you are paying a bit more for the building itself, including, I mean, we had the desk service, and that's not included in this, but the building itself is a huge structure.
Yeah, we're definitely happy with the structure. I think we, to be honest, built it right for the long term. There is an increase of $12,500 in this budget, and that has, like I said before, has a lot to do with the systems in place that make it safe for our staff members to work in and are actually code. I do think this number's going to come down this next year because this was based on, you know, some historical data, which we don't have much historical data. And unfortunately, the historical data we had, it was in January, February, when it was negative 26 degrees. So that's not the normal. I hope that's not the new normal. But I do think those costs will be coming down over time. We do have offsetting funds with solar, so that'll be also brought into the fold here as we go through budgets going forward. So I do think this is going to actually become less of a cost in utilities than it is this year. I can't, I don't want to speculate how much, but I do think it's going to be less next year.
And just a follow-up, and that is, there was some, when I took my tour of the building, there was some real thought that there might be even money saved by less accidents because you're not so crowded in that building. Have you seen anything like that in the building?
We haven't had any accidents inside the building like there was before in the old building, and we've only been there since January. But just the space to maneuver and to get out of the garage, I mean, it's incredible. And so I don't anticipate any accidents in the garage. If they are, there are some issues there that we need to resolve.
Lisa?
Didn't you say there was also a lot of staff time having to move around because things were kind of in there like a jigsaw puzzle, and they spent a lot of time moving to get one vehicle to get to another?
Definitely on a daily basis. There was equipment, we had to park it in the alley or the aisle. So to get equipment out, we had to move that outside and get other pieces of equipment out that we wanted to use that day, move it back in, then when we come back the end of day, move that piece of equipment out and put it back. So there was significant savings in time with that.
Thank you. Nothing to do with this in particular. Are you, I don't recall if you're present for discussions with respect to the capital improvement projects. Are you present for that?
Of course.
For those, you are? Well, good. Thank you.
That's it. Matt?
Brett, the brush collection, we had a lot of extra this year. Do you know what the final cost was at? Is there a revenue stream that covers that? Or could we look at creating some kind of fee like we do for garbage collection?
So the brush collection is really a service that we're happy to provide to the community. The only revenue that we generate in regards to brush is the yard waste site through the seasonal pass. But as far as the actual collection that we do five times a year now, next year will be four times a year, the actual, you know, cost for that is through taxpayer dollars.
Have we looked, is there some way we could create a fee for that, like we do for recycling and garbage pickup and pull it out of our general budget?
I guess that would be a policy decision.
Know about how much that is a year, what we've been spending?
There are some communities that do have, like their solid waste haulers collect that, but it's nowhere near the service that we provide. It would probably be more of a bagged type set out or a small bundle of sticks, nowhere close to what we provide to the community.
Yeah, I'm just, thank you. I'm just, is there another brush collection this year, I hope and pray and trust?
There is, end of October, fourth week of October.
Anything else from anyone? Is that it then?
Just a few more small.
Brett's got a couple of other ones here. Snow removal, you can see there's no shift, budgeting at $68,000. Again, this is only the salt piece of things on the snow removal.
Salt and other maintenance types things associated with the snow equipment.
Signs and markings, again, no shift here. Historically, we've seen these budgets run pretty straight line in terms of actual activity, so no shift here either. Street lighting, you can see we dropped it just slightly from the 2019 budget. Year-to-date, through the August bill at this point in time, is sitting at $72,000. So if you prorate that out, you know, with the understanding that as it gets darker earlier, we'll be using a little bit more. But we kind of looked at the 19, year-to-date, and budgeted more closely to that. I think they have a big LED push next year, too, and things like that, so.
And that's just downtown, so this is for the actual lighting of the whole city.
The new, I think this is new, the new little crosswalk lights by, that's new, right?
On Forest and Main?
Yeah. Is that, do we fund that?
So that's, we get a lot of those through a grant that the police department writes. So those are, they're a great asset to downtown and other streets in the city. Keep in mind, those are about $6,500. They're not cheap, but they are a great thing for pedestrian safety.
All of those that you see there are grants that were written by the police department, and they'll continue to do that in hopes of adding more.
Cemetery, apparently some of the residents were complaining about the turf maintenance, so we bumped that budget up a little bit. Nobody got that at all, huh?
Actually, the turf maintenance has been pretty good with our current contractor. Our contract is up at this, end of this year, so we're looking to hopefully re-up that contract or go for bid again.
All right.
Try again.
Last one for Brett is the parks budget, one of his other larger budgets here. Working our way down, salaries, wages, seasonal temporary employee benefits, did exactly kind of what we thought it would do, kind of running in that 2% to 3% range. Health insurance, you can see a big shift of 95% or about $9,000. Again, that's due to shift in the employee elections. Nothing you can do about that. Utilities, we bumped up by about $3,000. Again, this was just to put it more in line with the actual historical amounts that we're seeing. And overall, we're seeing about a 6% increase in this budget or about $14,000. The bottom box there, I'll let Brett speak to, but this is the staffing request that he has put forward this year.
So we are asking for a full-time parks maintenance staff worker. Currently, we have essentially one full-time parks person, and then we have four short-term park staff, and then four long-term start park staff. Currently, we have just over 100 acres of parkland. In the next three to five years, we're taking on about another 19 acres of parkland. We have all we can do to take care of that currently. And as we create more parks, we also have more structures and more things that need to be maintained. A lot of these structures are maintained over the winter months by one person, which is not realistic when it comes to all the different structures that we have in place and the level of expectations we have to maintain those. So we are asking for one extra person to help with our full-time person that we have currently. The full-time person we have now is the supervisor, it's a working supervisor's position, but this person also has a lot of office duties that they need to complete during the winter months and also do that work at the same time. Furthermore, when, furthermore, when our full-time person is out working, they're not doing the office duties that they need to get done, or if they're doing office duties, they're not out in the field doing things that need to get done in the field. Now, we have seasonal employees, don't get me wrong, they're great, and they're the heartbeat of our parks staff, but there's only certain pieces of equipment that they can operate and operate efficiently. So we have essentially one person that can operate equipment that otherwise, you know, nobody else could do on that staff.
Would this person be cross-trained, Brett? So that they could, would they be cross-trained so that they could do plowing and?
Absolutely, yes. They would, essentially, if we were to gain this employee, they would get a plow route. Yes.
If, with respect to the staffing request, if again, we were looking at resetting priorities or defraying some of the projects in the SIP, might that be a source for funding, something like that, in your mind?
As far as capital projects, that would be more of a finance, you know, question as far as a shift goes. When it comes to the capital, it's, you know, it's that service that would have to be looked at, and also the expenditure restraint, how that all fits in. But there's always opportunity that we'd be open to discussion.
Yeah, I mean, just from the standpoint of there being sources for money.
Yeah. Yeah, I appreciate you looking at other sources. And we did talk with Jamin and the mayor about sources of funds that we could try to help to offset this position, and we've kind of looked through those, and we feel it's an important position. We recognize there's other departments that have asked as well, but we feel that this is important for, you know, to provide the service that we expected to here in the city.
Thank you.
Question for Mayor, then Jamin. I'm assuming that, I was looking through the requests last night, the one page that we had in the packet about all of the different requests for staffing. I'm assuming that we can't do all of them.
I think that's a good assumption.
Yeah, and so the intent of these meetings is to get leadership in front of you and kind of describe why they're needed, elaborate a little bit on the information that's in the packet here. You know, continue to work through this process and take notes, and we'll regroup on the 24th. And I think internally as well, leadership will discuss this as we work through these meetings as well.
What would be my question, then, is are you going to be able to get enough information to be able to work through all of this? Okay.
We will be able to work through and give a potential number that we could shoot for, but ultimately, in terms of making the decisions and everything, it's up to the committee and the council at the end, so.
One last question for Brett, then. Would it be advantageous to have this person as a half-time employee?
I think.
Such as, you know, because you're, obviously, the winter months are important, too, but I mean, if you had, like, for six months during the summer months.
See, we already have those long-term positions in place, and we just, don't get me wrong, they do a phenomenal job, but to get that more operator-style employee, or type employee, I don't think we'd find that in a part-time person.
I just had to ask a question.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
And I should make note of this, too, in terms of the numbers that we're projecting here. This is assuming full benefits for anybody that's eligible at this point in time. So again, there's, you know, $21,000 of this would be assuming family health, things like that. So again, these are kind of portrayed as worst-case scenario at this point.
Any further questions? Okay, then I guess we go to AJ.
Real quick, Greg, I have a comment regarding your question regarding recruiting for those positions. Those part-time positions that you're talking about, it's like finding a needle in a haystack.
If it wasn't a part-time, I was thinking that, well, I guess it would be part-time because.
Yeah. So just, just so you know, when we have a position open, it's very difficult to find a official that wants to work part-time.
Yeah, I'm assuming, especially in this environment that we have right now.
Right. And he has a great staff of them, but when we lose one, those are key players.
Just had to ask, that's all.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll work through all of AJ's departments here. I think she has three or four of them that we'll run through. HR risk management, obviously, being the biggest one here. Just kind of working through the big increases here. You know, salaries, wages, employee benefits fell in line with what we would anticipate seeing. Health insurance, we're seeing a bigger jump there, about $14,000, but again, that's due to a change in an election within the department. Again, nothing you can really do about that. Working down, you see some bigger percentage decreases, but the dollar amounts are pretty small until we get to the decrease in the ads and publications, the 90% decrease there or $9,000. And again, we looked at this and tried to put this more in line with historical. I think the overall intent behind this was for a lot of the job postings and things like that to kind of department-specific organizations and groups. HR at one point was going to take that over. We looked at it again and determined it made more sense to allow the PD or whoever it is to put the job postings on their organizational websites and leave those costs within the departments and pull them back out of the HR budget because we weren't seeing those coming across AJ's desk to be able to get coded to the HR. So we were just kind of tying up budget in this instance, so we decided to decrease it this year. So overall, we're seeing about a 4% increase or $8,000 increase to AJ's department at this point in time. Again, AJ has a staffing request out there for admin or human resources assistant at 10 hours per week, and I'll let her discuss that a little bit.
Listening to and reading, because I collected all of the employee staffing requests from the other departments, as you guys can see, we run on a shoestring budget, and we run way below what the estimate is. It's supposed to be one HR person to every 100. We have over 200 employees that we onboard into the system, and that's just on the HR side. We also handle all the risk management. So I'm asking for this additional position of 10 hours to get somebody in to help with that very low-level administrative help, just filing, trying to get information into our computer systems. We do what we can do to try to keep our heads above water and just maintain. We don't have the ability, time-wise, to start utilizing different systems that would give us those efficiencies to reduce that paperwork. So we're hoping that we could possibly get somebody for 10 hours a week. But I'm going to say here, I'm willing to withdraw my request, being that I see the importance in all the other departments, and I was reading what they needed. So the mayor said, you know, put your ask forward by all means, but I think I would like to see mine go to the very bottom. We can get through and continue doing what we're doing. John has really jumped on board to try to help us with doing our enrollments this year online, which would reduce paper. So by trying to utilize some of the other departments or leaning a little bit on IT, I think that's going to help us. It's not going to free up the ability to, by all means, start moving more towards using BSNA as a paperless system, but I think for this year, seeing the needs in the BSNA as a paperless system, but I think for this year, seeing the needs in the other departments, I can't, I can't come to you and say this is a priority. So that's where I'm going to leave that.
AJ, if I could, right now, you have two people in your department, you and one-
Jenny.
Right, okay, Jenny.
Yeah.
Is she full-time?
She is full-time.
Okay.
Correct.
So this is not adding to her time to get her to full-time?
No, no, this was just trying to get a student to come in and help with filing and do some entry into the system.
Okay, and there's, do we have anybody on stamp right now that we could share?
The problem is, you're dealing with highly sensitive data for those that they're working with. There's also PHI in there as well, private health information, that, no, we can't.
Yep.
There's not, that's why Jenny's specifically working on that.
The other thing we run into is, is we have certain levels of hours we can give before they start getting into benefits, which costs more money. And I know Holly is, when you hear from her, she's a little stressed about the elections next year because there's four of them. So we're going to try to take some of the part-time people that may have some hours available to help out with the elections, which really doesn't leave much for anybody else. And even with that, I think she's going to be reaching out for community members to help fill some of the gaps so we can provide more opportunities for people to vote. And so we have had these types of conversations, and there's just really no easy answer. And I don't know, to me, it feels like in AJ's department this year has just been crazy. I don't know if it's always been like that, but I didn't notice it as much last year, and our offices were closer together last year.
Yeah, there's just a lot going on and things that you won't see. You know, I can't openly talk to you about who's on a warning, who are we walking down a discipline path. We have a community member who has filed a claim against the city. Those are the types of things that you don't see in my report. So those are things that actually Tim sees when he comes down, and there's different things going on. So it definitely is busy, but again, when I look at the other departments and what they need, and those are providing services out to the taxpayers, I think it's important that those go as a priority over what's going on in HR. So, but the ask is there, I just don't think it should be at the top. Questions on that?
And really, the other thing is, we want to make mention of, and I think Jamin did earlier, is the job that AJ was able to do on health insurance. So maybe you could let everybody know about that.
Yeah, I think we talked about this a little bit before. We came in with a flat renewal this year, it was projected at eight point two eight in our contract, and leveraged Dean Healthcare against courts with the hope that we wouldn't have to make that change again. That's a very difficult change for not only the employees, but also the HR department, because we're changing everything out, the cards, the entry into the system. It's very cumbersome, and we were able to leverage that, and courts did want to keep us. I was able to get my hands on a report that actually showed that our group performed at seventy-eight percent greater than what they had anticipated. So I think that's phenomenal to see that our employees are really taking care of themselves, they're utilizing the health, the health plan, they're utilizing the dental plan, and doing the preventative things that they need to, to help drive those costs down. So to see that we performed at seventy-eight percent was phenomenal. From there, you know, looking at the number coming in as a flat renewal was just, that was a huge win for us. But for 2021, you need to mark in your books, it is a six percent increase unless we go back out to market and look at changing who we're working with in the future. And not to say we won't do that. You know, Dean may be really desperate for the business and want to give us another aggressive bid, but then that means that those employees, again, that have built those relationships may have to change, and we've done that before. So six percent for 2021 and seven percent for 2022. And again, we'll try to negotiate it, but I just don't see with the fact that I've gone back to the well twice that it's going to continue to happen. And then dental, we were able to negotiate out for the fees for processing all of our dental claims. That came in exactly the same. They initially came higher, we were able to negotiate it down for a flat renewal there as well. But the dental plan itself is self-insured, and we did give a five percent increase to employees that work thirty hours or less for their premium. Questions?
Okay, next department for AJ is the other general government. Not a lot of activity here. You can see the first line here with some big numbers in is the self-insured losses. Historically, this line mattered more when the city was self-insured. We've been kind of working through the growing pains of switching to an actual carrier at this point in time. So we went back and looked at historicals in terms of what we need to put here. And again, this is just kind of a buffer line to cover some of the potential self-insured losses that we may incur, you know, dental's way up, if there's any sort of lawsuits that require deductibles, things like that. Also kind of a buffer to cover some of the changes in elections by employees throughout the year as well. So you can see for 2020, we put this number at thirty-one thousand dollars. We dropped it from seventy thousand dollars that it was in 2019. Historically, this number's been really low. You can see in seventeen, it was zero, eighteen was, let's see, forty-nine hundred, and year to date, we're at ten thousand right now. So we think thirty-one thousand is a safe number for this.
And we're out of the point now where we don't have what's called runout, which was some of that old plan with the claims actually coming through, so we're well past that. So exactly what Jamin said, this is just those odd things that come through on the plans.
And then the next cost here, the miscellaneous expenses, this actually has to do with a loan that the electric utility gave the city to fund their WRS liability years ago. So that's a set payment, but then we also booked the personal property chargebacks here, personal property taxes that we can't collect, we write those off to this account as well. Historically, those haven't been budgeted, so we threw them in the budget this year at about forty-four thousand dollars, so that's why you see the increase this year. Any questions on other general government? All right, insurance. So this one, we're not going to go through it line by line, we just kind of sat down and looked at it more bottom line and then worked through what we thought we could shift, and I think AJ has some more news tonight.
Yeah.
But overall, we decreased it from the nineteen budget, again, just looking at historical numbers.
So one of the advantages here, when the city put the human resources and risk management department in, is we were able to start managing our claims. And we had a modification factor, you want to be at one or less, and we were well above that. And we have really been ratcheting those cases down, making sure that we get employees back to work. I have to thank all the leadership for that, for allowing us to bring those employees back to work on light duty, as that does not negatively impact what's called our mod. Our modification factor is now less than one point zero, I'm very proud to tell you, we are at point seven five. And I just received this afternoon some numbers, and I sent them over to Jamin. You can strike your 2020 change from, or your change from 2019 budget, or your proposed budget, from one sixty-five down to a final number of one twenty-five, one thirty-one, which is a savings of thirty-nine thousand, eight sixty-nine. So that's a, that's a big one for us, another win. Any questions on the rest of the lines?
Again, you said that was workers' comp?
That was just the workers' comp line.
I would say one of the things that contributes to that is, one of the things that AJ does is she brings in Civmic, who's our insurance provider, and one of the things they do is they help educate us when we have our trainings on the importance of doing these types of things to get people back to work, and this is really the payoff for that time invested.
Yeah, I think the other one, too, is to applaud all of you for that new public works facility. We went from, I can't tell you how many bumps we had in the public works building, but to be at zero accidents for the year, that's a big deal for us. Our auto-physical damage also is doing really well.
Okay, I think that's it for AJ, unless you have any more questions?
Any questions, anyway?
Thank you.
Thank you, AJ.
Thanks, AJ.
All right, skip down a couple pages to IT.
John?
Mayor?
The hot seat.
I'll make a comment, it was a joke anyway, but I thought it was funny. Both the elections.
All right, so IT and media services, again, this is still a newer budget for the city, so I think we continue to work through some growing pains, but we're getting better at this, especially with John being able to take a deeper look at some of these costs that are coming through. We'll work our way down here. You can see on salaries, we do see a swing. There was a request for reconsideration done within the department this year. It's gone through finance, it'll be coming to council on Tuesday for a discussion. We did budget it as-is. I believe this was something that was written into agreement at the time of hiring, that this would be looked at for the 2020 budget cycle, and it was, and that's, that's why we're seeing a shift there in the salaries costs. Again, the employee benefits, jumping up fourteen percent, that obviously relates to the WRS increase and then the salary increase as well. The next number there, telephone, a two thousand, two hundred and forty-one percent swing. Again, we kind of touched on this earlier, that all the landline charter-type costs are shifting to the IT department, and we're pulling them out of the other departments. I know Ryan Weis and our assistant director and John worked really hard on this piece of the budget, and I think we're pretty comfortable with the amount we pulled out of the other departments and kicked back into the telephone budget, I know, or into the IT budget. I asked Ryan a lot of questions on this, and he would just blast the email that he and John had talked about a couple weeks before. So I know they kind of hammered this one to death, so we're pretty comfortable with these numbers here. The travel and conference number, the fifty-seven percent, again, it's a high percentage, low-dollar amount, about a thousand dollars, but again, the national media conferences in Chicago, and John's planning on sending someone to attend that. The outside services contracts, you can kind of combine with another line closer to the bottom where you see a three hundred and twenty-five percent closer to the bottom. I think this was just some shifting to show costs in the correct line, and then it also noted, noted that the IT department is covering all of our Adobe subscriptions at this point in time. Outside services contracts, too, the eleven percent swing, this is the social media archiving. I think this one went through finance and council as a contingency item in nineteen, so we got it into the budget here for 2020. Equipment maintenance, you can see a twenty percent upswing. Again, it's just related to maintenance costs shifting towards the IT department and out of other departments. Miscellaneous expenses, down forty-nine percent. Again, this was just John taking a closer look at where things should actually be coded, so it doesn't necessarily mean we saw a full reduction in costs, we're just coding them a little bit different. So some of the increases that you see in the lines above and below that are offset by the decrease there, just due to shifting how they're going to be coded in 2020. Let's see, operating expenses, second line from the bottom, down forty-two percent. We looked at historicals and tried to budget that more in line with what we've been seeing over the past few years. And you can see his total budget is up nineteen percent or about fifty-nine thousand dollars, but again, you can basically attribute that all to the increase in salaries and benefits, and then the telephone costs, obviously, so. Again, I think, I think we're in a good place with the IT budget, it's been a work in progress just because it is a newer department. We've been shifting a lot there, kind of moving things around over the past couple of years, but I think we're in a good spot, don't you?
Mm-hmm. I think we're pretty much done with it.
Good.
Tweaking.
Sweet. Now we're going to budget it again, we're good.
Any questions?
John does have a small staffing request at the bottom there, if you want to touch on the WSTO.
What I'm really looking for is, we're running into some issues with constraints between number of hours an individual can work as related to the number of dollars that we can spend on those. We have situations where we've got one individual who may work four hours a month. Well, when you start getting into that type of thing, why do you, you know, do you even want to have that job? So what we're trying to do is be competitive against the other businesses, you know, the Walmarts and the other entities within the city, to become competitive, but also then making sure that they have the knowledge base to warrant any type of increase they have, plus increase the number of hours they're working to make it beneficial for them and realistic for them to really come in and put some hours in. As I said, you know, if you have a four hours a month, do you even want to have that job? So with the football season's coming up, because as you know, we have one full-time person and everybody else is part-time. Those are doing the sports coverage and the different events that are around here, the government meetings, and any other volunteers or requests that we have to do for taping of events. So we're just trying to keep staff, and we've also lost a couple, so we want to be replacing them.
Tim? Go ahead, thanks. Hey, I'm just curious, is the, what is the amount of the request for additional staff? Is it just twenty-two hundred bucks?
Mm-hmm.
That's all it is?
That's all it is.
And that would be for somebody to man the camera or to whatever?
Well-
With WSTO primarily?
It's WSTO exclusively, and what it is, is we have individuals, they, everybody starts out as a camera operator. You know, you go to a football game, you man the camera, but then there's also people who are up in the booth who are running graphics, who are doing, we have a gentleman right now who is controlling the board. He's doing all the camera work and all the sound work, which is a higher skill set. So we're trying to do cross-training to bring those people up to it, and a director is going to make more money than a simple camera operator is going to.
And the twenty-two hundred, that, what does that work out to for, as far as an hourly rate that you'd be offering this, whoever it is that would do it? I assume maybe somebody-
Goes up to twelve dollars.
Four bucks? Okay.
What is it now?
Eleven.
Eleven.
Yeah, so if you're looking for something to do in your spare time, see you running the camera.
No, but I was going to say that I'm sure that the Russians, Ukrainians, and Chinese would be happy to help Holly with our elections. They probably already are. Anyway, okay. Okay, Tim.
Jamin, we got that one.
Oh, I wasn't listening, sorry. Was it a funny one?
I thought so.
All right, thank you very much.
Can I have one more question?
Tim, it is-
This is really a serious one.
Okay, all right.
I promise you. And then simply, this has nothing to do with the budget, which I think is lovely. It has to do with, when we get these weird emails that you're saying delete, how do I delete that without ever opening it? I can't figure out how to do that, John. Really?
It's a little trashcan symbol?
I see that.
Okay, highlight it and hit the trashcan.
But if I highlight it, it opens it.
No.
No.
You come over here and then show me when you're done, please, with your presentation. Thank you.
But thank you for not opening it.
Before you go, though, just a personal note, years ago, before I was on council, I was, I was in this room doing the camera work, and we used to have camera over here and camera over here, and it was, you know, none of this that you're seeing now. And it was fun. It was a lot of fun to do that. So if you are interested, Tim, go ahead.
Well, Tim, just to keep in mind, a couple of weeks ago at a home football game, we had a camera operator and a camera taken out by a tackle, so it is dangerous work.
Well, I did have an undergrad in television production and direction, so I might just do that, it might be fun, although I want to do the commentary as well.
For eleven dollars an hour, Will?
You have to, I listen to that.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, thanks, John. By the way, she just tried to do it and it opened it.
Well, it didn't open the-
Yes, you did open the email.
Sorry.
Should we adjourn here for a moment?
Where is it? She touched it. I see an email attachment.
All right, library is next.
You know, if you've got an attachment, you're never open it. Got you right, okay. So it's like, yeah, the guy, I've been watching.
Because you're doing, oh, yeah. So he's got your camera.
I'll let Jamin take the lead on this.
This is your first one?
This is my first one, so go easy. Congratulations.
Put your seatbelt on.
All right, I'm ready.
Okay, so we'll kind of walk through the same way, we have the departmental budgets. Obviously, the library is its own separate fund outside of the general fund, so we look at this a little bit differently. Top section there before the first black line is revenues, after that is all the expenditures. Walking through the revenue changes, you can see other county services fee, even though it's a twenty-five percent change, the overall dollar change is pretty minimal. The transfer in, it's a change of five percent or about twenty-nine thousand dollars. This is the transfer that this, this is the increase in the transfer that the city gives to the library to fund its operations. You can see my note there, it's mainly due to wage and benefits increases, and we'll touch on that a little bit more as we walk through the expenditure piece. The surplus piece, you can see that's, that's reduced to zero or went down by ten thousand dollars. In the, in the 2019 budget, the intent was for the library to use some of their excess fund balance to fund some of the operations. That's not the plan for 2020 at this point in time. Working our way down through salaries, excuse me, wages, benefits, things like that, you can see the swings aren't too surprising there till we get to the health insurance cost, which is twenty-six percent. Again, we saw some significant changes in the elections there, about seventeen thousand dollars, and if you look at the increase in the transfer in from the city of twenty-nine thousand, the bulk of it is- the bulk of it is due to that. Working our way down, so a hundred percent change in the telephone costs, again, that's the shift to the IT department. Travel, conference, even though it's a twenty-five percent change, the change is very minimal.
Postage.
That's postage?
Yeah.
Nope, sorry. Utilities, down fifteen percent. Again, we dropped it by about a thousand dollars. We wanted to put this more in line with historical amounts, so we kind of looked the past few years and year-to-date where we're at. Really, even though we see some bigger percentage changes up until we get to the bottom, the overall dollar changes are very minimal until we get to the very last line, the capital equipment line. You see that went down by about sixty-one hundred dollars or eighty-six percent. Again, that was exterior painting done in 2019. I should note that within the CIP, the library, even though the library's items are in the CIP budget, they do actually make their way into the operating budget under the library. So, it's not, the funding actually is through the, the operating side of things. And that, that exterior painting was part of the CIP budget, yes?
Just curious, there are those last, the two lines before that, the operating expense, specialized one, specialized two, that just, those are gone now, obviously. What, briefly, what was, what was that?
The specialized, operating, operating expenses specialized is, for lack of a better term, specialized library supplies, so things that we use to process materials to get them ready for people to check out. So, like covers for books, the, let's see, that small one. I don't know why. Why is that one being totally eliminated?
Well, I think we just looked at the cost in total and put it down to the two, I mean, two hundred bucks historically every single year. It's just a way to eliminate some unnecessary accounting and coding, so.
Yeah, most of our, most of those operating expenses, as you can see in the line above it, are, you know, what you, like typical office supplies, things like that. The reason we asked for a little bit of an increase is because this line is traditionally always, almost always overspent. We had two printers in the, for the public to use that were really toner guzzling machines and we were able to get rid of those and replace those with a machine that is under a service contract. So, that's why we bumped up a little bit the equipment maintenance line. But still, even with that savings, I estimated that we would still have to increase the operating expenses line by, well, I said seven hundred here. But this is, you know, it's just been something that we've always overspent. I looked at it historically and the previous director, he had always increased it by a little bit every year, but it was never enough. We always overspent on it. So, I was trying to get that back in line with more realistic.
Okay, moving on to the next page then, we have one last line item in terms of expenditures and that's capital infrastructure. Again, you can see that went up about a thousand dollars. Again, it's, that's computer peripherals is what it's in the CIP, but the additional thousand dollars has to do with the public address system in 2020 and that's why you see the bump in 2020. I anticipate it probably going back down to the six thousand or the five thousand that we've been seeing historically. Overall, we saw an increase of about thirty thousand dollars in revenues or three percent and total expenditures of thirty thousand dollars or three percent. So, no major swings there with the exception of the, the increase in the health costs, health, health insurance costs. So, any questions on the budget itself? Okay, and then you can see here Jim does have a couple of staffing requests as well.
Yeah, sure, I'll spend the majority of my time talking about those. So, just to give you, obviously, I'm new, to give you a little bit of an idea of where I'm coming from with these staffing requests. When I, when I first started in this position, I made it a point to talk to every one of my department supervisors about, you know, what's working in their department, what isn't, where they could use more resources. And these two staffing requests really kind of rose to the top in terms of need, as in need right now, that we, things that we need, resources, staff resources that we need just to continue operating at the level that we're at. We do have other staff needs specifically related to positions that do library programming. There was a, another request that I had originally, but we decided to pull back just because, you know, the budget situation being what it is, we didn't feel like it was realistic. And that was for a part-time programming librarian essentially, or programming library assistant. But these two here represent what I think we need in order to just keep operating at the level that we're at right now. The first one is the administrative assistant. I'm proposing increasing this, this person's hours from eighteen to twenty hours per week. The anticipated costs that I have, that I put in the packet is a little bit higher than what we, what we actually ended up with. The approximate cost of this is about two thousand dollars. I think two thousand and twelve dollars. So, this position has really grown in its, the breadth and scope of the work that it performs over, since 2013. This, you know, in requesting two more hours, I'm kind of, you know, sort of being strategic here and being realistic about what I think, you know, what we need, of course, but also, I mean, is there enough work for more? Sure. But I, I think that this is a relatively, relatively modest, but also realistic ask here. This, this position provides me with support that I need to focus on bigger picture issues like planning and strategy and programming. But this is also, this position is also the primary bookkeeper and accountant for the library. And this position works very closely with a full-time position, the head of technical services, who handles most of our purchasing and acquisitions. And I should note that I learned just last week, week before, this position, that, not this admin assistant position, but the technical services position, that person is leaving. So, this, this position becomes even more important when we, we think about onboarding a new person and getting them, getting them up to speed on all our purchasing and accounting processes. We have a lot of different revenue and expenditure streams at the library. We get a lot of, we do a lot of grant writing, a lot of fundraising. We have a fair amount of donations. Our friends group generates some money for us, so we have a lot of different pots of money, all relatively small in the grand scheme of things, but a lot of things coming in and going out from those. And keeping track of all of that is, is nothing short of, it's nothing short of miraculous. The, the system that our current admin assistant has come up with in, in conjunction with the head of technical services is really, really something to behold. She deserves a lot of credit for that. She's also participated in, just in the last year, in several continuing education courses from the Association of International CPAs. So, she's really doing a lot to sort of brush up her skills. This position is currently classified as a 551 library without benefits, so it's the same as our shelvers essentially and substitutes. So, as such, this position is not even eligible for paid time off. So, it's at eighteen hours, it's below that twenty-hour threshold. So, when, you know, this person has to go, you know, is sick or is off, there, there's no paid time off for this position. As such, I, I really don't feel that this is a competitive offer, especially in today's market. And I'm thinking, especially considering the skill set that is required for this position in regards to bookkeeping and accounting. In the event of a vacancy, if the person who are currently in this position were ever to leave, I think finding a qualified candidate would be, would be very, very difficult. Like I said, the estimated cost here is about two thousand dollars, two thousand and twelve, I think, to be specific. And I think we're getting a lot of bang for our buck with this relatively modest amount of money because this moves the position to a place where it's eligible for paid time off and provide, like I said, provides a lot of bang for our buck and in terms of our ability to attract and retain quality personnel. Extra hours for this position also means that I'm able to delegate more to this position and I'm able to do more of the big picture things, planning, but also programming, which, which the public wants more and more of. Think that, does anybody have any questions about that, about that ask? No?
Related to it, you know, the tech services, with her leaving, do you anticipate being able to find someone that will fit into that at the same wage, or salary, I guess it would be?
Yes, we listed the position, because the position is already budgeted for 2020, we listed the, the position, the salary range accordingly.
Okay.
On that, on that position. Is that, is your question?
It was posted as minimum salary up to what the person who's leaving the position is making.
That's a better way of explaining.
Entire wage range.
Okay. Thanks, AJ.
You're welcome.
Okay, yeah, so if nobody, and another, another thing that, that comes up from time to time with this position is, and this is not the first time that we've requested this position. I think it may be the first time that it has made it into the official ask, but this, this request has come up many times in the past, just within our library board. And the library board this year has decided unanimously to support this request as, as well as the one that I'm going to touch on in just a second. But one question that came up is, you know, can we find some efficiencies and, you know, we have a lot of, fair amount of volunteers at the library. Is there any way that we can, you know, let them do some of this stuff? And we have found some efficiencies in that having some volunteers do low-level administrative work, like filing and things like that. So, we, we do that already, but just the, the portion of the job, especially related to bookkeeping and, and other administrative work, there's, there's plenty of work there. Okay, so the, the other personnel request I had is regards our circulation supervisor. I'm proposing that this position be increased from thirty hours to forty hours per week. This is the only supervisory position at the library and I, I think, I'll defer to AJ on this, but I think it's one of the only supervisory positions in the whole city that is, that is part-time.
That is correct.
Okay. So, this creates a number of difficulties for administration of the library. The circulation department is the busiest department. It's also the largest department. The circulation supervisor supervises about twelve employees. Most of them are part-time, as you can imagine, shelvers, some volunteers. This is also the busiest service desk in the library. So, any of you been to the library recently? I hope most of you have. You can, the, this is the desk right when you walk in that triages every type of request and question to the other service desks. So, this is, it's a, it's a very busy desk and it's the only position that is not, the only supervisory position that's not full-time. So, it's a little bit of a head-scratcher to me when I came in, you know, from the outside looking at this with fresh eyes and so I started to ask around and, you know, I, there's various, I've gotten various answers as to historically why this position was, was like this, but it's, I definitely identified this early on as a, as a priority. You can also see, I think in your packet, you have a table of peer libraries. So, these are other libraries in the state of Wisconsin that do similar numbers as, as we do in terms of circulation. They're sorted by annual circulation just because that's a little bit better indicator, I think, than municipal population or even expenditure sometimes, which is another way that we compare ourselves to other libraries. And you can see that Stoughton is really the outlier here in not having a full-time circulation supervisor.
Jim, can I just stop you? You're going to find this in the departmental request information, not the packet itself?
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's a separate link.
It's a separate link, it's not.
It was, we were emailed it, right?
We were emailed, it's in there, but it's not the one we've been following along.
It's under the staffing request.
Oh, yeah, this, I guess what I thought of as the staffing request packet.
Yep.
But yes, thank you, Jean.
Absolutely.
Yeah. So, this, you can see that Stoughton is really an outlier here. I included a lot of libraries that even do far smaller numbers than we do in terms of annual circulation and most of them, not all of them, have full-time circulation supervisors. It's, in most libraries, it is the largest department and, and ours is no exception. So, another thing about this position is, from a customer service point of view, the circulation supervisor is the one who makes the decisions on, so I'm sure none of you have ever done this, but say your dog chews up a book or you drop it in the bathtub or something. The circulation supervisor is the one who has to decide, well, do we charge for that book? In a lot of cases, we will, but you know, there are some extenuating circumstances. The circulation supervisor is also the one who will help work with people on their library charges. Our goal is to get people back using the library, not to be punitive, so we will often work with people who have excessive charges. Circulation supervisor is the one who, who kind of does all of that. And with her being there only part-time, this creates really kind of a poor customer service situation that I've heard, my position, my office is right next to the circulation desk, so I hear almost everything that goes on. And, you know, I can't tell you how many times somebody comes in and, you know, maybe they're a little upset because they have to pay for a book that, that they wrecked, that they were hoping we wouldn't notice. And they have to be told, well, no, sorry, you have to come back. The, the circulation supervisor isn't here, she's only part-time.
One of the other really important things to note with that position is that this is a working supervisor as well.
Oh, yes.
She stamps the desk as well as all of the scheduling and supervision, all the other responsibilities that Jim's talking about. So, she is taking turns being at that desk as well as helping out in other areas.
Yeah, quite, quite a lot of, of hours staffing the desk too, just as much as, as other, as the library assistants. Thank you for pointing that out. I kind of, I kind of had taken that for granted because all of our supervisors are working supervisors. They're, they're all, you know, staffing the desk, pitching in, helping with programming. So, this is, this is also a component, increasing the hours of this position is also, might let us do something that we've been, I know that our board has been looking at for some time, which is staying open an hour later on Fridays. And it's something that we hear from the public that they really want. As it is now, we close at five on Fridays and that's really difficult for people to get in and pick up their holds or look for a book real quick for the weekend when they work till five. So, if we were able to be open an hour later on Fridays, like a lot of our peer libraries are, a lot of libraries nearby, that, that would be a big, big impact as far as the public is concerned. And having additional hours in this position would, would allow us to do that. We'd still have to move some things around. We are, all things considered, pretty leanly staffed. We do, we do a lot with what we have, but we are, we are, we are so leanly staffed that when we have somebody call in, somebody's sick or, you know, we have somebody take a vacation, it really, I mean, everybody has to pitch in in terms of covering the service desks. We have three service desks at the library. We can get away with not staffing the children's service desk all the time because it's so close to the circulation desk, but because of the way our library's laid out with the multiple levels, we have that second floor information desk where somebody has to be there pretty much all the time. And as it is now, it's, it's not, the system's not perfect because we do occasionally have to close it to allow people to take, you know, a fifteen-minute break. And that's something I wish we didn't have to do, but, but that's, that's where we're at. Does anybody have any questions about that one? This, the estimated cost on this, I should say, the numbers I was working from are a little bit different than what we ended up. I think the difference is about a thousand. I, when we had estimated this the first time around, we were looking at about eighteen thousand increase and then I think it came out in the end to be about nineteen thousand. A significant sum, I mean, it's all relative, I suppose, but it's, it's due mostly to the fact that this, at, when you go above, when an employee goes when you go above, when an employee goes above 32 hours, the city pays a larger contribution towards their, their benefits. Health benefits specifically.
Jean, seems like you're on the library, you want to add anything, or?
Jim's done a lot, Jim's done a lot of good research on this position. And the library, we are very leanly staffed. So bringing this circulation up will allow us to, I think, even be more effective, as well as marketable. There's no other positions where a circulation supervisor is at 30 hours a week. And, and our numbers show that we can support this. So I, I urge us to consider both of these for us.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, home stretch.
We should skip this one.
Okay. We're all done, then?
Not a lot going on here with the mayor's budget.
Try to be low maintenance.
Mayor's on a little bit different pay scale than the, the city staff. Ours actually, AJ, how does, how does the mayor's pay work?
There's a formula that the city council set up, but it depends really on how he gets along with the rest of us, if we vote on it.
I give him money back.
I'm just teasing. There's a formula that we use, and I go out and I look at, it shows the, the breakdowns of, it's through the, is it BLS?
It's one of the indexes.
Yeah, it's one of the indexes, and I have the step-by-step instructions. So I just go on to that and look at the formula. And that formula was approved by the city council years ago, and that's how it's always been handled. So that's why it differs from the percentage that we are offering to the other employees. So Tim doesn't really have any say in it.
There's no right sizing for me.
So, does that answer the question?
Yeah.
Okay.
I was just, I was curious.
Thank you.
It ended up being about one and a half percent. But overall, not a lot of major swings in the mayor, mayor's budget. So, any question on that one?
No, I would say, it looks like we don't pay him enough, other than that. That's a comment, I guess, isn't it? All right, that's my feeling, you're welcome.
Thank you.
And I'm right.
He needs a lot.
The next one is legislative. This is you guys, we're not giving you a pay increase this year. Any questions?
How do we do that?
All right, judicial. See, we did see a jump in wages this year. There was a slight increase in the clerks' hours, but again, this is one that's offset by increases in revenues. So this one went through. The employee benefits kind of follow suit with that, with the increase in wages and then benefits as well. Overall, very, very small dollar amount, $2,600 for the, the wage increases. And that's on top of the normal pay increase as well. So overall, nothing too major there, even though it's a 6% swing, it's about $3,600 overall. So, any questions on judicial? Finance. My team. So I can see salaries going about 1%. Wages, we do see 11% increase there, or about $10,000. Again, this was due to a request for reconsideration that has gone through Personnel and Finance at this point in time. It'll actually be coming to council on Tuesday. With the restructure, our assistant director kind of started looking at positions and what, what people are actually doing in the department. We did find that one of our employees is doing a lot more than her, her job description says. So we, we took a look at that and went through the process. And again, it'll be coming to council on Tuesday, but we did budget as if it's going through at this point in time. So. The employee benefits kind of follow suit, up 7%. That's just going to follow the wage increases and employee benefit, or the WRS changes. Outside services contracts, you can see, we did jump it up a little bit, about $9,000. Little bit out of our control. There's a lot of new governmental accounting standards that are out that we need to continue to implement and implement newly this year. Lease standards, a lot of the OPEB standards, things like that. They, I fought with them last year in terms of what they were going to charge us for implementing one of the new standards, but we're not going to get away with it this year in terms of all the, the additional work that they have to put in, the additional amount of disclosures. So that's why we're seeing the increase there. We did take another deep dive into the taxi grant program. Based on the latest reviews, we thought we could reduce this. We did drop it by about $18,000 at this point. Office supplies, I just tried to budget more in line with historical at this point in time. Year-to-date through September 30th, we're, we're at $12,000. So I think there was, this was kind of a, a catch-up to the switch of the clerks' department kind of falling out from under the, the blanket of the finance department, where all of the clerks and finance departments' office supplies were being budgeted in the finance department. And we kind of started looking at this a little bit deeper, and we're like, we don't need to budget as much as we are at this point in time. So we were able to reduce that. And then the operating expenses had no changes, that's just kind of training and things like that. So overall, we are seeing a change from the '19 budget in the finance department of about $230 or 0%. Any questions on my department? Next one is the assessor. You can see no change in the overall major contract, that's the one with accurate appraisal. We're still at $44,000. When we get into '21, that's when we'll see the drop down to $40,000 with that one-year extension that we gave them. We'll start working on the RFP next spring and see if we're going to switch for the 2022 assessment year. But as of right now, we're still at that $44,000 contract price. The other contract relates to the manufacturing assessment that the county does for us. It's county or state, I can't remember exactly. But we did have the actual costs come in, so we, we bumped that up a little bit for 2020. We saw those increase a bit in '19. So any questions on the assessor budget overall? Pretty small change. Commitment to community. Spent a lot of time on this one at last year's. Overall, we, we made some changes. So we, we looked at the museum, there was no request there that has come in. So we, we took that off the budget, pulled $500 off for that one. We did add the fireworks in, that came through as the contingency amount this year. So we just added it to the 2020 budget to continue funding at that, I believe it's a 50% level where the chamber would, would earn, or would fundraise for the rest of it. The city band, we left at 2020, or at, at $500 for 2020. The arts council, we pulled from the budget at this point in time, there has been no request. And then the affordable transportation, which was kind of a hot topic last year, we pulled, because we have not seen the request at this point. So, any questions on commitment to community? Yes.
So does the museum, or the city band, or the arts council know that we could ask someone?
I don't know what policy decision was made at CACP.
Yeah, the, the city band, you know, makes a request. The museum, I'm not really sure what, I haven't talked to anybody there.
Yeah, the museum hasn't asked since '17.
Yeah.
I mean, that's mostly volunteers, I think, so I guess I'd...
Volunteers, and they, they run on the donations to get?
Same with art council, I mean, I, I've...
Yeah, the arts council will...
Arbitrarily taken these out, and maybe we can talk about it in another...
Yeah, I can talk to, to Bill about the arts council, because the arts council did the art walk last weekend. So I don't know if they've tallied that up yet to see, you know, whether or not they made money, or, you know, lost money or broke even on that. That's really their biggest thing that they do. In the past, they've done some other things. I think they helped out with the mural down by Water Street and some other things, which I know Brett's doing some work right now on. But, you know, I, I really don't, they really don't ask for much.
Yeah, the arts council right now has its own separate fund, actually, and they're sitting on a fund balance of about $5,600, so.
Jamin?
Yeah.
You, you at CACP, we had that charitable organizations policy in front of it. I am computerless, it kind of crashed.
Okay.
So I believe that we, and can the other folks that remember our details or have the packet in front of them, that we, we were honoring historical relationships around this giving, the charitable giving, but yet I just need for us to be clear that is our policy in keeping with still being, giving money to the city band because of what Jamin raised? That's my question.
I know they were on there specifically, but some of these other, the others, I'm not so sure about.
Right. So we don't have to make any decisions tonight, but at CACP, we'll be sure to keep that in mind with, with the view that, that new policy wouldn't be in conflict.
Yeah, and that policy has been, city attorneys having some challenges with it. So we, we can talk about that at CACP and...
So nothing's finalized, but we did have it with the view. But we'll try to make sure that it's not, I mean, we won't write policy to, to try to fit the budget, but, you know, at the same time, we'll know what we're saying and try to make sure that we're not making any foolish language.
And I know the affordable transportation received a nice grant from the county this year, but I don't know if that's a grant they, they get every year. Those were just released in the last week, so I'm happy to see that for them.
So if I had to guess, that policy that will, is coming from CACP that the attorney has right now, it wouldn't impact this budget in any way? So the 500 for the city band would happen before this policy would go into effect? Correct?
Or they're likely.
Yeah, and the, the policy doesn't have to drive the decision related to this either at this point in time. The question is, and it's not so much about the dollar amounts at this point, because they are pretty small in the scheme of the overall budget. I mean, the question we kind of struggled with last year was, should we, not could we, you know?
Right. And, and I want to be consistent. I don't want to be seen as doing one thing and then come... So we want to be smart about how all these things are rolling.
I think the idea here is, these are city-sponsored events, the fireworks. The city band plays at city functions like Memorial Day, month of July, typically those types of events. And then the arts council is, is a committee of, you know, a city committee. So basically, that's kind of the idea, that those three at least kind of fit into that thought process.
I remember that last year when the affordable housing, they made their pitch for that. You know, I, I objected to it simply because it wasn't budgeted, and so I was glad to see it in the budget here. And glad that they got their grant from the county.
Yeah, I think Lisa had a question.
Yep. Any questions? Oh, Lisa?
Well, more about the process, and I think you kind of mentioned this just so. We'll have the other presentations next time, and then likely the 24th more decision? Or maybe have some decisions and discussions if there's time, or?
Yeah, I think what will happen is, is we'll, we're going to have a conversation at leadership about the staffing requests and some of the right sizing types of requests. And then we'll have that second meeting, which will get the rest of the presentations. And then as we get the rest of the numbers from the state, we'll come back on that third meeting, and we'll have some recommendations of if there's any room to, you know, any flexibility there to us to address some of these other issues that aren't included right now. We didn't want to put stuff in there unless we had the money, for sure. And we're still hoping that we'll get some relief when the state money comes in. We heard of some savings tonight with the workman's comp, so that helps. And we're still looking for others, so. But then if there's something that's in there that you really just don't feel is appropriate, you know, certainly you guys have the ability, you know, during the process, either now or at the council to remove those items through an amendment. So that's, that's kind of how it works. But it's a lot easier, I think, to get a recommendation from this committee that everybody can agree on. So when it goes to council, it's not so cumbersome. I mean, that's the goal, but it doesn't always work out that way. But we're certainly going to be open to any feedback you have. If you don't think of anything tonight, and you think of something tomorrow or the next day, you know, feel free to shoot, shoot me or Jamin an email, and we'll, we'll add it on the list for consideration.
Yeah, there's, there's going to be a couple of moving parts to this as we work through the process. I mean, it's early, it's only October 3rd at this point. There's still information coming in. You know, I think leadership needs to get on the same page in terms of overall objectives and goals, and what, what's most important here in terms of right sizing, critical right sizing, staff requests, things like that. Give you folks enough time to kind of digest this as we work through this meeting and the one on the 16th. And, and the hope would be to have just some real good discussion on the 24th and make some decisions for recommendations. And, and we'll, we'll bring back some recommendations as well in terms of our discussions with leadership and which direction they want to go as well, too, because they, they shouldn't be left out of this discussion and this decision-making process either, so.
Yeah, and we know we're not going to be able to do everything. And what we're trying to do is just chip away at it, and hopefully someday somehow we'll, we'll be able to address them all, but we know it won't all happen in one year.
Lisa?
I just, I don't know if it's, we want to do this now or via email, but just to make sure that we have a quorum on the 16th, just to...
Yeah.
Can anybody be there?
Kind of close tonight. But as far as I know, everyone, is everyone here going to be available?
I'm not sure yet, so I'll...
Okay. Yeah, like I said, I'll be here, but probably about a half hour.
Be a little late.
Yeah.
And if we have to, we'll adjust the start time. But, I mean, at least at the next one, we won't have to do the, the beginning presentation again, and that takes a while. Now that we've had a few come through here and go through it, I think it'll go quicker. So we'll take a look at the start time for the next one, and then we'll reach out to those that weren't here tonight, make sure they can attend. So you're not sure yet, Matt, anybody else?
Lisa, that's a library trustees meeting, but I'm coming here at 6 o'clock. And, and I plan to stay, but if I can get over to the library trustees, if we have a healthy quorum, I may.
Okay.
But I'll be, I'll be here. I was late tonight because of work.
Good point, Elisa, thank you.
I think we just had the one more slide, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
Last but not least.
Legal.
Legal, yes.
I tried to eliminate this one, but Jamin wouldn't let me.
I wish we could. I wish we could reduce it at least, but we're actually bumping it up about $10,000. If you look historically, we're, you know, 122, 125, '19. I think we're, we're on track to go over our budget for '19 as well. With all the activity going on in the city, it keeps attorneys busy. So we, we had the discussion about potentially reducing it to free up some budget. I just, I don't see a way around it.
I don't either. I mean, Matt sent me a list of what he calls open files right now. And there's quite a few between redevelopment and some annexation and, you know, Kettle Park West. And, you know, I don't know if there'll be as much ordinance this year as last year or not. Last year, we did Chapter 38, Chapter 78, those were expensive. But there's still some talk that we may have to update our conditional use permit, some of the other things, and, and the zoning code as well. And those are very time-consuming. And I know other municipalities are staring at the same problem. We're trying to get our league of municipalities to, to do some more boilerplate-type ordinances for us, so at least we don't have to spend the entire amount of time having our attorney do the whole thing. So hopefully, we get some momentum with our trade association to do that to help.
Is that because of state statute changes?
A lot of it is state statute changes, and some of it is just our own living now. And, you know, and when you're doing development agreements, those things take a lot of time and energy. And we're working with, you know, a couple of businesses in our business parks as well. So property transfers are also time-consuming as well.
Okay, so just high level going forward, we have the October 16th departments and funds that we'll be going through. That'll be a little bit longer meeting, I think, but again, as the mayor noted, we'll, we'll kind of get right into the business of it. Ultimately, what I'll present in terms of just summarizing information to get everybody back on, you know, kind of square one in terms of starting points. I'll produce a condensed income statement, so we can kind of see where we're at in terms of bottom line. And we'll talk a little bit about the expenditure restraint again in terms of what money we have to play with at that point in time. And that'll be about the extent of my summary information, then we can just jump right into the, the individual presentations, so. Does this format work?
Yes, yes.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you, Jamin.
Thank you. Did anybody have any other questions? Any, Tim, I see you raising your hand there, do you have something? No, I was thanking, I was thanking the department for their work as well, who just stuck in. Just to make sure.
I heard a motion.
You were used to it, so.
Thank you.
I'll turn it.
All right. Lisa and Matt.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Return.
All right, nice job, Greg. All right, nice job, Greg.